Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll now go into ...
Calling, calling the Board of Education back into session. Do I have a motion to go back into open session?
May.
Okay, is there a second? Second, second by Mr. Benway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next is the, the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
May.
Okay. I'll go with Ms. Caldwell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, second by Ms. Davis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hensley, why don't you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Davis?
Yes, if everyone will join me for a moment of silence, please.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay. So, we have first on the agenda's first reading of new policies. So, we don't vote on the policies today. So, is Ms. Patterson, you're going to give us a presentation on them?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson. And.
Dr. Patterson.
Ms. Davis, if there's anything you want to say, as committee chair first.
No, just that we met on May 22nd. It was myself and Ms. Bruno and Mr. Holmes. We also had, Mr. Metcalf was with us that day, Ms. Parker, Dr. Locklear. We had our guest with the pilot, Mr. Lamb. And Mr. Levy was there as a guest as well. And we had a good meeting, and we have got a lot to go over, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Patterson.
Thank you. So, we'll start with policy number one, which is policy 21257315, confidential information. This policy needs to be adopted to align with the board member training by Schwartz that was on April 8th, 2024. Moore County Schools does not have this policy currently.
Okay.
That was something that Mr. Schwartz suggested that we, we do correct.
So, so this is a, this is a new policy that's not recommended by the North Carolina School Board Association, is not a part of their model policy.
It is in, it is a North Carolina School Board Association model. He referenced it in, some training, I can't remember the name of the training that you guys had, but it is a North Carolina School Board Association model, I'm sorry, policy, and he did recommend it.
So, is it, so is it, so is it a new North Carolina School Board Associate? So, any idea why we didn't adopt this in the past? I, I thought that with few exceptions, we adopted the North Carolina School Board Association Model Policy en masse, with just a few exceptions.
It was my understanding that it's just something that he came across that we had overlooked unintentionally, and he brought it to our attention. If, um, if Dr. Patterson remembers differently.
It's still here.
Yeah. You want, you want me to grab him real quick? I will. Yeah, hold on.
Okay. Okay. Can you scroll up, please? I just want to read the first of this.
The question, Mr. Schwartz, is for policy 2152, the confidential information, just how, why it's been introduced now. It was my understanding that we had unintentionally overlooked that we had not already added this to our policies, and that you brought it to our attention. Is that correct? I'm sorry to pitch you on the spot. During your board member training.
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Well, the, the specific question was, I, I just asked what the origin of this was, and then I was told that it was part of the North Carolina School Board Association Model Policy that we had failed to adopt in the past. And I thought that we adopted all of their model policy with the exception of stuff that we intentionally rejected, so I guess that's not the case.
Um, I'm not sure exactly with regard to this policy without going back and doing the research, but the other thing that you've got going on is your policies and your system don't match the state system, the School Board Association system. So, what we've been doing as we've been revising policies is we've been renumbering your policies, and in some cases, we've found that there are some things that fell through the cracks. So, I don't know if this one fell through the cracks, or at one point it was intentionally rejected, or it was just never considered an PLS update. I'm not sure without going back and looking at the history.
This is the School Board Association Auto Policy?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Fair enough. Continue. Why don't you stick around?
Do you have somewhere else to be, sir? If you're able to stick with us.
I can stick for a little while, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The second policy is policy 2127, board member technology use. This was part of the spring updates, but this is an additional policy that Moore County Schools does not have. This was part of the spring updates, but this is an additional policy that Moore County Schools does not have.
Okay. Continue.
The third policy today is policy 2330, Board Meeting Agenda. This policy was actually sent back to committee, and the committee had made revisions. The red you see are the original revisions, and highlighted are the additional revisions from the last committee meeting.
What number was this, 2130?
Twenty, twenty-three thirty.
Any questions there? Okay, seeing none, let's keep on pushing.
Policy number four is 3420, Student Promotion and Accountability. And on pages four through seven is where you see the recommendations from the School Board Association to update this policy.
Any questions there?
Did we not have that in our policy before?
No, that was an addition.
Okay.
A complete addition for the letter J there.
Okay.
Policy five, policy 3460, Graduation Requirements. And there's, there's several changes. You see, it starts on the very first page, and this aligns to the changes in, in the legislation.
And when, when would that take place? Would that take place on somebody that's starting as a freshman? Or is that taking place on somebody that's starting as a junior?
It's encouraged to, you need a plan going into your freshman year.
Okay.
To be able to plan for graduating in three. You really do need to have that plan in place going in your freshman year. So it's something we've always allowed. It's always something we've done in Moore County Schools. We don't have a lot. We have a majority of our early graduates graduate December of their senior year. But certainly, we've, we've offered for many years.
Okay.
To let you know how long that's been in place, I graduated in three years from undergrads. So, it's old. That's, next, next policy.
Policy number six today is forty, uh, policy number forty forty slash seventy-three ten, Staff/Student Relations. And the changes are on page four. As recommended by the School Board Association.
Any questions there? All right.
Next policy, forty-two forty slash seventy-three twelve, Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety. And there are changes on pages three and pages five, and page five, I'm sorry.
Any questions there? No, keep on going.
Next policy is forty-two seventy, sixty-one forty-five, Concussion and Head Injury. Pages one through three has the recommended changes from the School Board Association.
Any questions there?
Okay, policy fifty-ten, Parent and Community Organizations. This policy is, has been revised by the district on page, sorry. Page two of three is in blue, should be red. Sometimes it just changes colors on us, we found out. But that's the change. I mean, it has to do with being able to utilize debit cards. And that's in, that, that came about because the national organizations allows the use of debit cards, and Moore County Schools did not. And so that's been added and vetted by Tina and our auditor.
It's for PTO, right?
PTA.
Well, also local. Yeah, I can get it out.
Business organizations, PTA, PTF.
Okay, any questions there? Seeing none, let's keep on going.
Next, last policy, actually, sixty-one twenty-five, Administering.
I have a question on the previous policy.
Okay.
So, um. I think, so, it's, the original policy talked about two-party signature on checks. We all, everyone understands that's an accounting control to prevent, uh, uh. No, embezzlement. I was trying to think, I almost said fraud, but I was trying to narrow it down. Yes, fraud through embezzlement. Right, everybody understands that. And we actually do it here for the central office. Debit cards, this is the 21st century, and debit cards, you know, convenience. And I've actually talked to some people about this several months ago, oddly enough. But I guess the question is, where it says the uniform, you know, the organization's uniform bylaws allow for and clearly outline the process for utilization of the debit card. We should probably give guidance as to what we expect in the way of processes, rather than have each organization trying to guess what we, the central office and school board.
And I can address that. We have, Tina Edmonds is putting together a detailed document, and there will be training at the beginning of each year that the principals do that, and they sign off saying that's been done.
Yeah, now, what, what it cannot be, just from having been a victim of this, and Mr. Benway might understand this a bit, is the US government used, you know, while they do have a rigid contracting process. And to make it simpler and cut red tape and all this stuff, they gave out purchase cards to, to people. And then fast forward a year later, there were so many rules and regulations on the use of a purchase card. It was actually more difficult to use the purchase card than it was what it was designed to supplant. So we need to make sure that when we develop those regulations, that they are stringent enough to ensure that we have some protocols in place to prevent embezzlement, but not so onerous to make it practically impossible to use a purchase card. Because I've witnessed that firsthand in government overaction. They, they implement something to make it easier, and then a year later, it ends up being more difficult. So I would caution.
Yes, sir.
You know, the whole idea is it'd be streamlined and simple with some degree of anti-fraud.
Yes, sir.
Policies.
I do note that the superintendent does make those regulations under our policies. So, anything else on, on this one? On, on the one that Mr. Hensley's talking about? Any further comment? Okay. Next one. Go, go ahead.
Last, last policy is sixty-one twenty-five, Administering Medicines to Students. And the change is on page two, as recommended by the School Board Association.
Any questions there? Hearing none? Okay. So that'll be our first reading. We will put this over to next Monday, and we'll vote on these, on these policies. Please, I would ask the board to, if you have amendments or anything on the policies, so that we can get through them quickly, please read them ahead of time. And if you have an amendment or a change, although we've gone over them here today, please write them down so we can go directly to them, rather than have to go through them at the business meeting. So, okay. Let's go ahead and.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you to the chairman of the, of the policy committee, which is also our vice chairman. Okay. Next, Dr. Locklear, updates on elementary school playgrounds?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Purvis has joined us this morning. Good morning, Ms. Purvis.
Good morning.
She has the next three items. She has four, five items for us this morning. But the next three items relate to our master facility prioritized project list. And the number one item on there, which was district-wide improvements of playground, elementary playgrounds, replacement auditorium curtains, and gym bleachers. And so these next three items are related to that. We're pleased to be able to bring you bid recommendations today, so we can move forward with these projects with great haste. So, Ms. Purvis?
All right, yes, we're excited to be able to get this district-wide projects underway. We have, first of all, the elementary school playgrounds. Formal bids for the needed updates to all elementary playgrounds were opened on May 20th. The following companies submitted bids. Bliss Products, eight-hundred-ninety-two-thousand-six-hundred-twenty-five dollars, fifty-eight cents. Gray Fox, eight-hundred-twenty-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty-two dollars and eleven cents. And Creative Playscapes, five-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Creative Playscapes, excuse me, did suggest some alternates, including the replacement of structures at Carthage, Cameron, and Bass in lieu of extensive repair. New structures would be preferred for longevity purposes. The cost to add the structures would be an additional eighty-three thousand dollars. We are suggesting that we go forward with the replacement structures, including the addition of these alternates. The final contract price would be six-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Thank you, Cindy. The low and responsive bidder was Creative Playscapes. Even with adding those alternates, Creative Playscapes has installed structures at Robins Elementary in the past. That structure's held up well and been enjoyed by the school. Staff recommends the award of bid and contract for playground updates be awarded to Creative Playscapes in the amount of six-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. And this project will be funded with bond premium funds.
Okay. Is there any question on the, on the playground equipment? Yes?
What's a typical lifespan of playground equipment?
The typical lifespan, Mr. Benway, is about fifteen, twenty years with good equipment. And that doesn't mean that we won't have to have our maintenance guys replace some bolts, replace some paint, those types of things, some chains for swings. But for major structures, like the new structures we're putting in, we'd hope to get twenty years out of those.
Thank you.
Let me tell you, personally, I just appreciate the attention to detail, and the fact that we're looking at playground equipment. Because when we have injuries at school, oftentimes, that's it. And by paying attention to that, I think we're, we're, we're saving, if not lives so much, or maybe it is a life, I've no idea. At least we're saving injuries, and I, and I, I think that's great. I think it's great that we're doing this.
I do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you happen to know, and if you don't, that's fine.
Yes, ma'am.
The mesh shades that are available, do you know if they provide any longevity to playground equipment lasting for any longer?
The, the coloring of the playground equipment would not fade as quickly. However, those mesh shades do not deter the weather from still coming in.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
So they may look a little brighter for a little longer, but that is not gonna increase the longevity in terms of wear and tear of the equipment.
Deterioration and stuff. Okay, thank you.
Anyway, I'm sorry.
Well, if nothing else, mesh shades become a, a maintenance issue, more so than the equipment themselves. I remember the disappointment on the, the pavilions we got. Remember the huge amount of money we spent on pavilions? And we looked at them and go, God, really? I could have built one out of, anyway. For the business meeting, I think it would be wise if we presented the, the diagrams of the playgrounds listing the specific equipment and renderings of them, so that the public and I can see what we're getting for two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars per, because this is three schools. We're spending roughly two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars per school, right?
So, what I can bring you are some examples of what they gave us for each structure replacement. What we plan to do is allow those schools to choose which piece of equipment within the realm, within the range of what, you know, they can do. They gave us an example, Mr. Hensley, of, hey, this is the size of equipment. This is one piece that you could get in terms of where we're replacing. The majority of this work will not be replacement. The majority of it is going to be adding things that need to be repaired. But we will have several new structures put in.
So, so that disturbs me, and I'll tell you why it disturbs me. You know, I assumed that there was all kinds of work done in the committee, that we had diagrams and firm plans. And now, it looks like we're, we're.
We have.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It looks, I just hadn't finished my thought.
I'm sorry, sorry.
It looks like we're being, we're, we're voting on a, oh, we don't, it's like Nancy Pelosi. You have to pass it to know what's in it. And it sounds like we're being asked to vote on something, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars per school, and we don't even know what we're getting. We're getting a menu that the schools choose from. Well, can we present the menu on Monday?
Sure.
And then we can discuss what they can choose from, and how that's gonna work in the process.
Absolutely. This will cover thirteen elementary schools. So this covers all thirteen elementary schools. When we're looking at the, the open bullet, that is just for Cameron, Carthage, and Bass. They're requesting replacement structures there that were not in the bid documents. So the bid documents spelled out each of the thirteen schools, and bullet by bullet, what they're getting. So each of the thirteen schools have a defined purpose list, from engineered wood fiber to swing replacement to mat replacement. So I can certainly include that at the business meeting. But when this was bid out, it was very specific. Some of the other thirteen schools are getting replacement structures. However, we did not have in our bid documents a recommendation for Carthage, Cameron, and Bass to get new structures. When we, you, what we utilized to put out the bid notice was our facility assessment. And if you'll remember, we had that playground assessment when they did the facility assessment. And that facility assessment went school by school, and gave us a list of, here are the things that need to be repaired, here are the things that need to be replaced. In this instance, the Carthage, Cameron, and Bass structures in the facility assessment were recommended for repair. However, when Creative Playscapes looked at it, they felt that the price to repair it did not outweigh the longevity factor that you get in new structures. So that's the addition of these three new pieces. But this, this price of six-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars will cover all thirteen elementary schools. Does that?
Okay. Well, that's not at all clear. You know, this, a proposal should stand on its own. And although I just thumbed through the contract, I just scrolled through the contract as Charlie was doing, and it talks about the net worth details of the contract. But it doesn't show us or the public what we're voting on and getting for our money.
We will update this, so we have that ready for the business meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further questions on the playground equipment? If not, your next item.
All right. Next, we're gonna move to auditorium stage curtains and hardware for Northmore, Union Pines, and Pinecrest. Formal bids for the replacement of auditorium stage curtains and hardware at Northmore, Union Pines, and Pinecrest were opened May 20th. The following companies submitted bids. Georgia Stage, three-hundred-one-thousand-thirty-six dollars. Jansen Industries and Stage Equipment, one-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-five dollars. And Stage and Gymnasium Specialties, one-hundred-twenty-thousand-six-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and sixty-one cent. Upon receipt of the curtain samples, there was a significant difference noted in the quality of the twenty-five ounce curtain versus the thirty-two ounce curtain. And after inquiry, the cost of moving to the highest-quality curtain would increase the overall contract by seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. Staff suggests that we purchase the highest-quality curtains, since the goal is for these curtains to be serving the schools for the next fifteen to twenty years. Increasing to this would bring the total contract price to one-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. The low and responsive bidder was Stage and Gymnasium Specialties. Stage and Gymnasium Specialties has completed work in high schools and community colleges across the state. Staff recommends the award of bid and the contract for replacement of the curtains and hardware goes to Stage Specialties in the amount of one-hundred-thirty-eight-thousand-one-hundred-fifty-four dollars and fifty-three cents.
Any que, any questions on the curtains?
When will this take place, over the summer? We are hopeful that we'll get these ordered and in over the summer, if not the fall. Okay.
Once again, let me say, paying attention to the arts, that's another great thing that you guys are doing. You know, we're, we're more than reading, writing, arithmetic, although that's important too. But the arts are, are clearly very, very important. So appreciate that. Any, any, any further comments on this?
Sure, I have a couple of questions. So, well, I too am a big supporter of the arts, and it's, it's a shit, well, anyway, I'll say. So, just last month, I think it was last month, we accepted a donation where the Pinecrest baseball team had to raise money to build their own dugout. Right? But here, we're spending a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand dollars for stage curtains for, for, for our stages. Any reason why a baseball team has to raise, sell hot dogs and donuts to build their dugout? But we're doing this for free for the art people?
Well, if you'll remember, sir, it was a combination of PAC funds, so back to PAC funds.
Right, I understand, but the point is the community raised the money.
Yeah. And I do think, unfortunately, that there's a larger booster group for athletics than there is for theater. You know, I hate to say that, but I think that athletic boosters generate a lot more money. They come in larger numbers than the theater groups and their boosters. So for them to raise funds is a bit harder. So for them to raise funds is a bit harder.
Okay. And my second question is, is this urgent? Is there a reason why this needs to be done this year?
This should have been done years ago, just speaking from the high school perspective. There are tears in those curtains. Those curtains should have been replaced years ago. I mean, we're way past that.
I'm sure, but is there a safety or a fire reason, or is it purely aesthetics?
It's both. The rigging of those curtains needs to be updated. In all three schools, we've kind of got them jerry-rigged so that they work, but they don't work properly. So at the very least, we would have to go in, or we need to go in for safety purposes, and have the rigging fixed. Our maintenance has worked on those and worked on them, and they have them workable, but not as they should be. So we would like to have that rigging fixed. If we're going to do the rigging, we need to do the curtains at the same time because the curtains are in bad shape as well.
Okay.
Any further questions on the curtains? Okay. Yes, the next item?
All right. Next, we have bleacher replacement for the high schools. Formal bids, again, were opened for Northmore Union Pines and Pinecrest, May twentieth. The following companies submitted bids. Mastercraft, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Learning Environment, seven hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred dollars. And Southern Flooring, seven hundred twenty-five thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. In determining the quality, we considered how well the bleachers utilize the space of the gym. The plan proposed by Learning Environment is most responsive to the requirements of the bid, allowing for more seating capacity at each gym and including the required upgrade from one-phase electrical to three-phase electrical at Northmore High School. Although Southern Flooring was the lowest bidder, the recommendation is that we award the bid and the contract to Learning Environment in the amount of seven hundred seventy-one dollars and two...seven hundred...seven thousand...seven hundred seventy-one thousand and two hundred dollars. Lot of money here and a lot of dollars. The project will be funded, again, with bond premium funds. And this is the last of those district-wide projects that go together.
Okay. And this is also for handicap access on those bleachers?
These bleachers will have aisles, rails, and handicap seating, yes.
As a person who's a little older and who's used those bleachers, that would be very, very welcome, especially for the grandparents who are watching their kids. But that's just my opinion. Any questions on the bleachers? Okay, hearing no questions on that, we'll leave that for a vote at the business meeting. The Castle cell lease, Dr. Locklear?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is...we brought to the board two months ago your agreement to the wording in the lease and what we're working towards with the renewal of the cell tower lease. There's a small segment of land adjacent to Pinecrest High School that we've leased to Cell Towers for many years, and this is the renewal of that lease. I'll let Ms. Purvis walk through that. We worked with, of course, council on this to update this and negotiate this lease. Jenny?
Yes, sir. Since nineteen ninety-six, the Moore County Board of Education has leased a portion of property at seven ninety-two Felton Chapel Lane in Southern Pines. It's approximately twenty-four hundred square feet to new singular wireless. At the March fourth, Board of Education regular business meeting, the board approved the terms of the lease and authorized the execution of a formal lease agreement, which we bring to you today. For review, the Fifth Amendment to option and lease terms will be ten-year extension, two additional five-year terms with the expiration of October thirty-first, 2038. The increase in the base rent to three thousand a month affected the first day of the second month following the amendment execution. That's a twelve percent increase. Replace existing two hundred and fifty-dollar-a-month revenue share provision in Second Amendment with thirty percent revenue share on future subtenants and a fifteen thousand dollar signing bonus. It is the recommendation of staff that we move forward with the execution of the formal lease agreement with Crown Castle at the terms listed above.
Questions on the lease?
So my memory's a little foggy. You said that we approved the terms of this at a previous meeting?
Yes, sir.
And these are the exact terms we approved?
Yes, sir. Same terms.
I just saw the thirty percent revenue share on future subtenants. So whoever they have tenants on that tower, they're still just going to give us two hundred fifty dollars a month, right?
Instead of the two hundred and fifty dollars a month, we're replacing what we currently have is two hundred and fifty dollars a month. We're replacing that with a thirty percent revenue share.
But it says for future subtenants because what are we doing with the existing tenants on the tower?
They will remain.
At two fifty a month, or they're covered in the base rent now?
They will...the future tenants will remain, but they will move to thirty percent following the execution of this agreement. So...
Right, I understand what the future tenants do. The future tenants are going to get thirty percent.
All tenants will move.
All tenants will move.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then that's not what this says. The third bullet.
So we will reword that.
I understand what I'm saying.
I do.
Did you see where it's missing?
Yep, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Further?
I made a note there, we'll fix that.
Further questions or comments? Yes, go ahead.
The only other thing is "new" needs to be capitalized because that new singular wireless, they're not new to us as part of the...
Yes.
It was a little confusing to me for a second.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Anything further on that? Hearing nothing further, we'll move on. This is very serious as the school year winds down. My granddaughter at Pinehurst Elementary said they once ran out of ice cream, so I'm very concerned. Just joking, just joking. Okay, go ahead on our...
Go ahead, Ms. Purvis, this is our annual child nutrition bid awards.
Yes, sir. Invitation to submit bids for general groceries, supplies, and beverages for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year was issued through the North Carolina Procurement Alliance. The bid opening was held May eighteenth, 2024, at the McKimmon Center in Raleigh. Bids were based on the twenty-three, twenty-four usage numbers. The district is not held to the estimated usage and pays only for what is used. There was one bid submitted for the general groceries bid. Cisco of Raleigh submitted a bottom-line bid of two million three hundred sixty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-six cents and is recommended for award of the general groceries bid. U.S. Foods and Gordon Food Service submitted paperwork stating they declined to bid. There was one responder to the beverage bid. Pepsi Bottling Ventures with a bottom-line bid of sixty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, and they're recommended for the beverage bid. There was one responder to the ice cream bid. Hershey with the bottom-line bid of forty-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and is recommended for the ice cream bid. Actual price will depend on product usage. Maola Dairy submitted paperwork stating they declined to bid. Ice cream freezers at each school site are provided and maintained by the vendor. Vendors must calculate this cost into the unit price for ice cream. Bids for ice cream are submitted at a firm price per unit based on estimated usage provided by the bidders to the...provided by...to the bidders by the district. There were four responders to the supplies bid. Cisco Raleigh, one hundred eighty thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Southeastern Paper, one hundred eighty-four thousand four dollars and ninety-three cents. Imperial Wade, one hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And finally, Riverside Paper, one hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. Cisco Raleigh was the lowest bidder at one hundred eighty thousand sixty-five dollars and is recommended for the supplies bid. Bid renewal is available for milk. On April twelfth of 2022, Moore County Schools Child Nutrition opened bids for milk for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and that was issued through Moore County Schools Child Nutrition. Maola Local Dairies was the lowest bottom-line bidder and as such was recommended for the award of the milk bid. Child Nutrition has communicated with Maola Local Dairy seeking a second-year renewal for the milk for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Maola Local Dairies is willing to renew its bid at the same price of twenty-nine cents per unit. Child Nutrition recommends bid renewal. Bid renewal is also available for produce. Honeycut Produce received the award of bid in twenty-three, twenty-four with the cost plus delivery fee of two dollars per case. They are willing to renew the bid this year with produce costs being based on the week of March eleventh through the fifteenth and the same delivery fee of two dollars per case. Again, I will remind you that these numbers are not fixed as we will only be charged for what usage we use.
Yes, questions? Well, let me ask. Two million dollars for groceries, is that for all of our lunch rooms, or what is this for?
Yes.
Okay, seems like a low number. I don't know.
Well, it actually increased. There is a pretty significant increase. Last year was one point eight million, so this does go up. We did, again, bid for that higher item, those higher-quality foods. Our cafeterias have really enjoyed that this year, the children have, and we are still in the green when we look at our cafeteria funds. However, as you know, when you visit the grocery store, everything has gone up in price. So it has increased, but yes, sir, this is for our general groceries.
Okay. And I did notice that there was only one responsive bidder to several of these things. Are you satisfied that the bids are reasonable, even though we only got one bidder? In other words, you don't think we should...we'd have any better luck if we put it out for a bid again?
Well, because this did go through the National...the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, I don't think we would have any different result if we were to put that out again.
Okay. And once again, we are doing the highest-quality food again this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because that was important. And do you know or do you anticipate us having to raise the price of lunch?
We will not have to raise the price of lunch. We have investigated that with Ms. Taylor, and there is no need at this time to raise the price of lunch.
Okay, that's...sounds like very, very good news to me. Any questions, any further questions? Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Purvis.
You're welcome.
Approval of intervention resource purchases, of learning intervention?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recently...go ahead, Dr. Metcalf. Donna was hiding, I didn't see Donna, so good morning, Ms. Gafford. Good morning, Dr. Scott.
Good morning.
Dr. Metcalf, I'll turn it right over to you, but this...the district received, as a result, some federal funds, some funds specifically to intervene in certain schools and certain sub...certain subgroup. So this is to purchase materials to do that. So, Dr. Metcalf?
Yes, sir, thank you for that introduction. We are looking to purchase resources, intervention resources for students with disabilities at ten schools, eighty-three thousand nine hundred nine dollars and seventy-three cents through a federal grant that we received. And Donna's going to talk about the resources.
Yes, we did extensive research in looking at our specific needs of our fourth through eighth...fourth through, actually, high school. We have a lot of resources for K three for remediation and intervention, but at this point, our middle schools and our upper elementary and high schools don't have resources. So we actually found what's from Voyager Sofras, a rewards program. It has a student book and a teacher book with a very scripted program that can be used for any supplemental or intensive intervention. So we're very excited to have found this resource and are hoping to purchase these to support our schools who have students with disability as a subgroup that need that additional support with word recognition and fluency.
Further? Okay. Yes, please, sir.
If I understand correctly, these have directed reading containing self-improvement.
It's directed with specific word work within word work, multiple syllable words, et cetera, prefix, suffixes, all of that. And then there's some fluency work as well. So it's a scripted program, so the teachers have a guide that they go right through the student book with, and the students work with analyzing prefixes, suffixes, et cetera.
I have a question. Are you training the teachers?
Yes.
So is it in-house, not in-house, I'm sorry, the classroom teacher is getting trained, or is it the special education teacher?
It will actually hopefully be during the intervention time, and it will be whoever the principal chooses as their person to be lead on that. So once we know who those folks are...so, for example, like New Century, she's already said, I think I want my eighth-grade classroom teacher to be responsible for that. Those are the folks that we'll be training.
I can...my head's going, because I can see more students that possibly don't fit the disability benefit from that.
And I think that's what our schools are planning, is that if we have, based on our data...
But the grant is specifically for this subgroup of students, but that doesn't mean that more students couldn't receive the benefit.
Yeah. What we're planning is with the training and the resources is that anybody that data reflects from IREDDI needs to have this type of intervention. We're going to probably provide that.
Thank you.
Yes. Further questions? Yes, yes, ma'am.
No, Stacy got exactly what I was going to pinpoint, so yes, thank you.
Well, so I have a...
Yeah, please, please.
So I have a question. It kind of is tangentially related to what Ms. Caldwell asked, but so this is a one-time grant or an annual grant?
It's a one-time grant.
Okay, and I noticed...
That we know of.
Right, you can reapply, but we've got it one time, right? So I noticed that the vast majority of the books, notwithstanding the earlier comment, we can expand this to a larger audience, which, of course, you know, if our faculty has the knowledge, yes. But the preponderance of this purchase are student workbook. So that would student workbook, well, it says book. So do we have to purchase these books every year? And if so, where's the money for that going to come from in the out years if we don't get the grant?
Well, first, we want to make sure it works. So that would be the first year of looking at these materials as ensuring that there is fidelity with the implementation as one piece to that. The other piece would be making sure that it is a product that fulfills the needs of what our students need. So we would be doing a lot of analysis next year. If it is definitely viable, we may have books left over that we don't use with the grant this year, because you see there, I think we have four hundred and fifty purchases, which will be about forty-five hundred books for the fourth through ninth grade, the what I call the burgundy book, the brown book. So we will hopefully have materials that we'll be able to continue to use with various subgroups.
So there's no...if we like this, there's no guaranteed funding for the out years?
Yes, sir.
But if it's effective, then...
We'll look at textbook funds.
We would need to build it into our textbook plan funding.
Further questions? By the way, thank you very much. I'm glad we recognize that all teachers teach on at least three levels. One ahead of the year, one at the year, but also one behind the year. And many of those kids who are behind are not necessarily labeled as remedial, so this should help. This should help them, so appreciate that.
Thank you.
Exceptional children's contracts for twenty-four, twenty-five. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One moment.
And I'll turn it right over to Dr. Metcalf and Ms. Cooper and Neil, Mr. Waters. But this is like last month, this is an additional grouping of contracts to support the special head session for children's needs for our children in the next school year. So I'll turn it right over to Dr. Metcalf and Teen.
Yes, these are contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We brought these before the board. This is a continuation of those contracts. We're trying to do a little better job this year of bringing the contracts all at one time rather than throughout the course of the year. That's why you have the high number that we're bringing here today. And I'll hand it over to Ms. Cooper.
Sure. The first contract we have is for Santill's Children's Center. That is to provide developmental day services for up to twenty-nine students ages three through five, and that is not to exceed three hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and ten cents. That includes the grant money that we get per child, plus a fee for supplies and materials, and a one-to-one assistant for one student that requires that per her IP. The next one is for MGA Home Care. This is for nursing care for four students at three schools at three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. schools at $312,000. This is a new one, we brought it to the board earlier this spring, a new company that does a much better job at providing service and coverage. The next is for AOK, Active Kindness Adult Care Services, it's actually a transportation service, they provide transportation to and from private placement at $60,000. I'll let Mr. Waters go over our speech.
So we have five contracts for speech listed here, the first of which is Holland Therapy Services, which is an individual therapist serving in Aberdeen Elementary currently, that is for $82,000. Small Voices is a new contract for us, which is an individual, Haley Bradenberg, who is going to be replacing the last service that we have from Blazer Works, which is a company out of Atlanta that we are ending our relationship with currently, we're going to be more local with all of our, all of our companies and our providers. Refined Communication is currently five SLPs, military wives, all of them for $440,000, ranging from preschool all the way through to elementary services. I think we have one currently at the middle school. Morgan Borup is returning with us.
Could you go back for a second, something about military wives?
Our Refined Communication Solutions is, that company is all military wives that are SLPs, speech language pathologists. So just something that, very unique and they're local, something that just kind of makes them unique.
Okay, I just heard that, I was confused, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no worries. Morgan Borup is coming, is returning with us, she is an individual contract there. And then dysphagia and voice therapeutics is also a returning company out of Laurinburg where we have two SLPs providing services through them. So all of these, we are shifting to local, but they are able to provide in-person services, which is very much makes them desirable for us, that we're, we've been able to, for a semester now, avoid virtual services, which is huge for us.
I have a quick question. Would I be right in assuming that Refined Communication Solutions has approximately four individuals?
It is, it is five, but, but some of those are working half weeks, just because of scheduling, especially with being military wives, they, they come to us and say we have availability for half a week or.
I'm just looking at the cost and for individuals, I'm seeing a certain cost and I just wanted to see if that's.
Absolutely, yeah, they range from, range from 20 hours, actually 25 hours a week to 30 hours per week.
Question?
Yes, 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 sir.
Do we have a breakout of this, the students served by these contracts?
I do, I, I keep track of, of our, of our workloads for each of these therapists and we, our, our state regulations say that we cap out at 50 students per therapist, and when I look at each of these for how they break down for the portion of the week that they're working or if they're working a full week, I do a fraction of that 50 and we look really closely at those. And they are very much in proportion with, with the rest of our county therapists as well.
And just remember, we may have to shift where folks are at the beginning of next year, because as we get students in, new students with IEPs and some students will leave, it's all dependent upon those individual education plans.
And of course, these also are dependent on if we have Moore County Schools employee applicants, and we currently do have two prospects that we're working toward for next year that I'm really excited about, that if that comes through would mean that we would opt for that instead of a contract.
I, for one, I'm very interested in the EC function here, I wonder if you could provide us with a, your best estimate for the breakout of students served?
Sure, I, I can get that to you, I mean, it, we have, they range from, and I tried to get everybody's numbers here at the end of the year and I do monitor that, if we have a person who's giving us a day a week, then I shoot for obviously right around 10 students, but we have several that are above that even for that limited time of the week. But we have a few that are above 50, but we, this time of year, the numbers are a little bit lower because we've exited students, just kind of the ebb and flow with, with the way the caseloads work. Beginning of the year is when we, a lot of times, will place more students and we see those numbers go up. But I can absolutely provide that for you.
Yeah, snapshot would be great.
Of course, be happy to.
Further questions? Yes, yes, sir.
I'd like to just kind of start at the top, I have questions on most of these, if I could, if we could, starting with the Sand Hills Children's Center. By the way, I see they're getting tons of donations from the guy who owns Pinehurst and all kinds of stuff, just editorial comment. Maybe I have it confused with another charity. So ages three through five, what grade are ages three through five?
They're considered before kindergarten. We are required to serve students beginning at their third birthday.
Okay, so these are all pre-kindergarten?
Correct.
And so, what, let's.
These are pre-kindergarten students who require developmental day services per their IEP.
Okay, so let's just, I just want to make sure I understand and maybe I can explain it to constituents or other people can understand. So what is our preschool program? What do we have right now in place for preschool?
So we currently have 11 preschool classrooms across our district, which serve three different buckets of students, one being developmental day, so students who are EC, who need that developmental day setting, pre-K who are economically disadvantaged, that's the more at four, smart start, and then tuition-based, students whose parents pay tuition for them to participate.
Okay, so again, I, this is, this is getting more interesting, every syllable you've said, this has gotten more interesting. So our preschool program is not open to the general public unless they pay?
The general public, public can apply for the pre-K seats. We opened that in late March, early April, they were given a span of time that they could apply for the pre-K seats. We don't, the, our county is number 100, we get the least number of pre-K seats in our state.
Those are assigned in the state.
I have been, yes, DHHS.
Okay, DHHS does this, okay, so now we're getting somewhere. So pre-K appears to be more of a social program than it does educational program. Why, why is it administered by the DHH? Well, hold on, hold on. So why is, why is kindergarten or pre-K administered by DHHS and not the education side? What's the, I'm drawing a blank.
NCDPI?
Yeah, why is it administered by DH, that's why it's said it's a social.
NCDPI.
I'm sorry, let me finish. The, you know, we generally get all of our education and our charter from NCDPI, but our pre, our pre-kindergarten, we get our marching orders from the Department of Health and Human Services.
So I'll start at the beginning. So NCDPI, they are over our students who are developmental day, our students with IEPs, okay? DHHS handles our NC pre-K who are the economically disadvantaged. All of our sites are five-star sites, they do have the creative curriculum, they follow a curriculum. We, we have the DHHS side, the NC pre-K and our tuition students, so that our preschool classrooms can be inclusive in nature. So we have students with disabilities in those classrooms and students without disabilities in those classrooms.
Okay, so, so I'm still hopelessly confused, so let's, let's try this a different way. So we have tuition-based, I can pull open my wallet and I can buy a seat at pre-K?
Well, you have to put your name on a list.
I have to have a child.
There's a waiting list, there's a waiting list, so, and what we do is we have left our tuition low and our, our school employees get priority, it's $420 a month for pre-K in our schools.
Was that 420 or was that 600, Dr. Lockwood?
Well.
Would you just raise that, am I incorrect?
It's two different things.
It's two different programs.
Thank you.
Okay, so, 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 so here's what I've heard, I, but there's obviously a fourth category, this is where my confusion is, I've heard there's, there's tuition-based, there's pre-K if you're economically disadvantaged, and then there's an IEP developmental day.
Developmental day.
But you also said something about a lottery. The three you mentioned originally, there was no free lottery, you either had to be developmentally, you had to be on IEP, you had to be economically disadvantaged, or you had to pay tuition, but, but there's a, that's what you said originally.
For, for the DHHS, there is, there's a big waiting list, there's a scorecard, there's a program that you put all the information in.
I'm just trying to figure out.
There's not, there's not a lottery, there is a waiting list.
Okay, again, I'm just trying to understand, when, when you originally laid out the three ways you could get in, there was, you have an IEP and a developmental program.
Right.
And there was a pre-K economically disadvantaged and how, that's funded.
Funded by DHHS.
Okay, and then there's tuition-based.
Correct.
And then you said.
That's it, that's all, there's three different buckets.
Okay, so, right, right, so that's what I said and then I was told that's incorrect. So, so the only way you can get into pre-K in Moore County Schools is one of three ways, you have an IEP, you are economically disadvantaged, and DHHS pays us.
And you get a seat through NC pre-K.
Or you pull open your wallet and you pay for it.
Correct.
So if you are, unless you're economically disadvantaged, you have to pay for pre-K in Moore County Schools.
Unless you apply and get a seat through North Carolina, pre-K, yes, you pay for your, your preschool seat.
So I, I'm not the only one confused, unless you get a seat through what, did you call it, North Carolina?
North Carolina pre-K, that's the one that is DHHS-based.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, so unless you're economically disadvantaged, have an IEP, you have to pay for pre-K.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's what I'm saying, okay. Gosh, I don't know what to think about that, I, I need to think about that. And also keeping it low-priced, that just means our reimbursement's lower from the state, right?
No.
I'm sorry?
It's separate, it's set by the state. DHHS sets how much they give us per student. It's $496 a month.
DHHS gives us $496 per student per month.
Correct.
So we spend $14,000 a year per child, educating child, so that means our cost is $1,400 a month and DHHS only reimburses us $500 a month?
Correct.
Wow, what a horrible deal that is. I mean, if we spent, if, if our, what is our, $12,000 a month, $14,000 a year, I'm sorry, per child?
I think if you look at per people, if you spend your combined state.
12, 14,000.
It's more like 9,000, somewhere around nine grand.
Right, and then we get in the local funding, everything, we spend about $13,000 per child, 12,000 to 14,000 per child.
I think it's a little less, I think it's closer to 10 grand.
Let's say it's 10, let's say it's 10 grand, so that's $1,000 a month, we're getting reimbursed from the state $500 a month for our pre-K students.
Correct.
That, someone needs to, and this is an optional program, we don't have to do this.
We have to provide services for developmental day kids.
So, so we have to provide for developmental, the tuition base is optional and, and the economic disadvantage is optional too, right?
I, I assume it is optional, but I, it's something that we very much want to do and actually want to expand.
Look, I'm not saying we want to do it or not, I just want to make sure everybody understands what's required, what's optional, where we stand on funding.
I'll be honest, I don't know if the state requires you to offer pre-K slots if you're offered them or not, but I'll be honest, I don't know the answer to that. But, but this is something that we're trying to expand, find other school locations where we can offer more NC, more pre-K.
And we work very hard to get our preschool students ready for kindergarten, that's the advantage for us.
I, I am not making, I, I'm making zero judgments on the wisdom of this, I'm making zero judgments of whether we want to expand it, contract it, eliminate it, make it mandatory, I'm just trying to make sure we understand it.
Right.
And also what our costs are. So let's just take this, the pre-K economic, so, so let's go back and let's say our average spend per child is $10,000 a year, that's a 10-month school, that's a 10-month school year, so that's $1,000 per month per child is, is what the costs are. I, I actually think it's higher than that, but let's go with that, it makes the math easy. So that's $1,000 a month is what we get reimbursed, well, the state is reimbursing us, they're, they're saying you have to do these economic disadvantaged children and here's your allocation of $500 a month, well, that's less than what they give us to educate other students. So right off the bat, we need to tell the state we need more money because that's only half of what it costs to educate a student. Anyway, that's just based upon this short conversation, that's my takeaway. And same thing with the tuition base, how, how long is pre, how long's the pre-K day?
7:30 to 2:30.
Okay, so it's almost a full day, you know, we've had many discussions on, I mean, that's half, that's like 25% of the cost of daycare. So we're providing pre-K at 25% of the cost of daycare and then we wonder why we have a waiting list. We're, we're providing pre-K at a cost to the public of, of half of what it costs us to actually operate it. So again, these are all things that we need to take into consideration and consider. Now people will say, oh my gosh, you know, Hensley's Against the Children, well, I, I just want to make sure we understand the costs and we're recovering the costs, here's something that clearly we're only recovering half of the cost of a program we operate. Okay, on to specific things, just doing math, so that first, that first item there, Sand Hills Center, providing developmental daycare, day services for 29 students, we are spending 13, $12,689 per child for that.
So it's that, it's the supplies and materials and remember it also is for a one-on-one assistant for one student.
Right, I got it, but we are spending $12,689 per child for that.
So, right, and we get $1,350 per month for every student that is there, through.
I understand, but again, being good stewards of the taxpayer money, whether it's federal, state, or local tax, we need to be good stewards of it. So I just want people to understand the cost of this. The second item, you know, we're spending $312,000 for nursing care for four students, that is just, just for the record, that's $75,000 per student per year.
Yep.
For healthcare costs so that they can attend school in person, right? So those students that just, just tax 75K per year for what it costs us to educate those child, again, I see we get reimbursed, but it's still, okay, Active Kindness Adult Care, what's the reimbursement there, is, is that a rate per mile?
It, they, it's a flat rate of what they are charging us to go back and forth year round.
I would like details on that, I'd like to know, I'd like to know the annual, you know, where they're going to and from and what the annual mileage is.
They are going to the Miriposa School in Cary.
Yeah, just.
It's all in the contract.
Is it attached on here, is it attached, okay, I can read the contract, okay. The, to a question that someone asked earlier about the Refined Communication Solution, I'd like to know the full-time equivalents of each of these language services.
Sure, they range, we have the five therapists that we have there, what we're projecting for next year are ranging from 20 hours per week for one, 30 for another, 25 for another, 35 for the fourth one, and then 25 for the, for the fifth.
Yeah, because when I first saw that, I heard there were five language pathologists, I did, you know, wow, 88,000, finally a reasonable services contract, but then I learned that some of them are half-time, none of them are full-time, they're all, you know, 30 or 35 hours or less, so I would just like the full-time equivalent so that we know how much it's costing us per full-time equivalent.
Absolutely, and I can take you through each of those. Holland Therapy Services is 60 hours per week, so you're looking at, at, at three, at, I'm sorry, not 60 hours, it, breaking down, it's three days a week, basically it's 24 hours, that's, I misspoke, so 0.6 of a, of a full-time equivalent there. Small Voices is 30 hours a week, so we're looking. Small Voices is thirty hours a week, so we're looking at point seven-five there of a full-time equivalent. Refined, again, I think I just gave those. Morgan Borup, there is a, that is a full-time forty-hour equivalent there for that. And then Dysphagia and Voice Therapeutics is a one-point-six full-time equivalence. So one full, full-time, and then a point-six for the other.
So just, just based upon the last two, we're spending about a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per person, full-time equivalent is what it sounds like.
That's correct. Our, our rates range from, they, for our Small Voices there is, Holland Therapy Services is eighty-five an hour. Small Voices is eighty an hour. Refined is eighty-one an hour. Morgan Borup, seventy-two per hour, and then Dysphagia is eighty per hour.
Everyone knows what I'm going to say. My, my concern about this is once you start outsourcing jobs, then it's going to be exactly what the healthcare profession found. Let's just do traveling nurses, and the next thing you know, you're paying two to three times more for traveling nurses. And that's the reason why I've, I've opposed remote teachers. That's the reason why, why I've opposed teachers coming in on, on visas. And that's the reason why I've opposed contract teachers, is because it's a slippery slope. And, you know, once you start outsourcing stuff, and everybody jumps on that because they make twenty-five to a hundred percent more, and we end up paying more. We just have to guard against that, and we got to try to hire the people direct. I know it's tough.
Well, and that's why we put in the contracts that we give a thirty-day notice, and as we are able to recruit and bring people back to Moore County schools, we plan to do that.
Yeah, this has all definitely been done out of necessity to provide services that are required on those IEPs for our students. And, and we will always opt for, for Moore County Schools employees. And I work really hard to sell that with our, we have a couple, and the ones that we've interviewed this year, I, I work really hard to sell that because there are a lot of great benefits. I say that as an SLP by trade who has twenty-five years in now and is vested in, there are definitely some strong benefits there that remain.
Right, and the only, the only thing I would just add is, you know, some of the questions I've asked specifically on this is, A, I was trying to understand what the criteria are for kindergarten and kind of figure out the cost structure. But, you know, we shouldn't operate something at a fifty percent loss. I mean, we just need to look at that. Regardless of what people say, you know, oh, we raise the lunch money, you know, well, sometimes you just got to do that.
Well, and I will add that, you know, our day ends at two-thirty, whereas daycare ends at usually six, six-thirty. It is a limitation for some folks because we do end our day at two-thirty. And we do have the partners for more parents and children who are advocates, who are out there trying to get more seats for Moore County along with us for NC pre-K. But it is a set rate for public school, and I, I don't know the reasoning behind it, but I will find out.
Well, we need, we need to do the math. And again, it's one thing to say, look, our cost per child's ten thousand dollars a year, or ten, or say a thousand dollars a month, but that doesn't mean the cost per preschool child is that, right? So we just need to make sure we understand the cost basis, and we're not expanding something at a loss.
Correct.
You know, so we just need to make sure we at least break even, assuming that's what we want to do. And then, anyway, and then the second, so one reason was I was just trying to understand, and hopefully other, help other people understand. And then the second thing I would say is, I want people to know, the public to know, the shockingly high cost of, of some of these IEP and special need students. And again, I'm not making any judgment of it, but, you know, as a society, what, twenty years ago, they, you know, they passed a federal law. Everyone will go to, to school regardless of their certain, you know, the lowest, whatever it's called. And everyone's for that, but people need to understand, okay, you're for something. Do you know how much this is costing us? You know, we have, we have students that cost us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. You know, a dedicated nurse and a dedicated, and a dedicated teacher. And A, it takes away from our teacher pool, and, you know, two is we're spending a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars times on, on a single student, and that detracts from our, you know, that significantly increased our per-cost student. So I just want people to understand the cost of some of these programs. Thank you.
Anything further on that one? So where are we on your presentation? I want to make sure. Yes, yes, sir.
We're good.
We're good.
You're good, you're, you're, you're done there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, thank you. Does anybody need to take a break? Okay, so we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll go to I. Okay, so we're in recess. And I think we're, we're ready, guys. Calling us, calling us back into session, unfortunately. Mr. Benway was not feeling well, so he has left. But we still have a quorum, so we're, we'll keep on going. This is a good one. Elise Middle School, I understand you've got some calendar flexibility to tell us. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, you recall last month, Principal Kunsicki from Southern Middle School came back and requested calendar flexibility, as he is a restart school at Southern Middle School. And we're pleased to report, you know, the board approved for us to apply for Elise Middle School to be a restart school. We're pleased to report that at the May State Board of Education meeting, that application was approved. And so now Ms. Priest is coming back with a very similar request than you heard from Mr. Kunsicki last month. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Metcalfe.
All right, I'll just turn it right over to Ms. Priest. Yes, excited to use that calendar flexibility with the restart model. Ms. Priest?
Yes. So my team was able to work with some of the other restart schools at the Restart Retreat back in April, and we were able to hear a bunch of the different ideas of how we could use our restart flexibility, knowing that we possibly would be approved for restart. And so one of the ideas were from Mr. Kunsicki and his team at Southern Middle, and they talked about the calendar flexibility. And my team was really interested in doing that, and how they were focusing on the students who need, who need to make, who aren't meeting proficiency and they're not making their growth, and those are aligned to our goals. And so we really liked that idea of really targeting those students on those flexible learning days. And so after talking to him, we came back to, my team and I came back together, and we looked at his proposed schedule at Southern Middle and what they did. And you'll see that our calendar mostly aligns. There's just one day on there that's a little bit different. Our team really wanted to have three days first semester to really target students, and then have that time for professional development in the afternoon as well. And then we did three days second semester as well. That way it's even, and we have some more time early on to target our students, and then also provide professional development with my staff as well. And so we're going to continue to push growing in our PLTs and just really working on effective assignments and rigor in that professional development time. But you'll see on here that we do have fifteen minutes added to our day. I sent it out to the staff so we could vote on it, and they wanted to start ten minutes earlier and then end five minutes later than the traditional middle school time. And so we'll start at seven-fifty and end it three-oh-five every other day except for the flexible learning days. And then we'll start at seven-fifty and end at eleven-fifty on our early release days. And then that time, that way we'll have time in the afternoon to meet with the staff. There will be, the buses will run the normal time and everything as well. And if there's any students that may not, or families that may need some extra support, we do have the Northern Moore Resource Center up in the northern end. That's been really helpful for us, and they'll work with us as well. And so we're really excited to have the opportunity to target our, to help target our students who really need it, who may have missed some more days, and then, and also have that time as well to provide professional development to the staff.
Questions by members of the board? Seeing none. Yes, yes, sir. All right, give you a second here. By the way, while he's doing that, let me say, shout out once again to Mr. Kunsicki for pioneering this, and a shout out to you guys over at Elise as well for, for getting together and adopting it, and also getting it, modifying it to your specific needs, which are maybe slightly different. But this is the kind of innovation that, that I think the board particularly appreciates. Mr. Henson?
I'm still, I'm just trying to reconcile something here.
What we could do is just put this as an action item, and then if he has any other questions, we can do it on Monday as well.
Okay.
If you need more time.
No, I, I, I'll formulate my question here in just a minute.
Okay, give him a second. Okay.
I mean, I could just leave, and we won't have a quorum, and we could just do all this next Monday if you want. So, so I have a couple, I have a few questions.
Okay.
First of all, I think you may have misspoken. That's what I was researching. At the, and I just want to make sure. At the very end, you said that this flexibility will give us more academic time, and I think I heard instructional development time.
Yeah, and so it's going to focus, what I meant to say is focus more academic time with our students who really need that academic time. So the students who are missing a couple of days for attendance, they're going to be invited. Our students who are not meeting proficiency on I-Ready into the grade test, and our core assessments, those are the students that we're going to target. And so we're giving them that individual time in the smaller groups. And so that's what I meant. Sorry if I misspoken.
Yeah, we'll call that the Southern Middle School model, then, because you, I think you did say instructor development time. I'm like, wait a minute. No, 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 the purpose of this is more, more instruction time for the students.
Yeah, it's for the students who need it.
Okay, so one of the things of restart schools is, is, and I've heard this, they get charter-school-like flexibility, right? And, and I hear that. They get charter-school-like flexibility on, you know, a whole multitude of issues. The problem is we're not getting charter-school-like results. And I'll give you an example. I was looking this up. You know, Moore County Schools has three, I'm sorry, Moore County has three charter schools, I think. You know, Moore County Schools has three, I'm sorry, Moore County has three charter schools, I think. The Academy of Moore is B-rated, Stars is B-rated, and Moore Montessori Community School, which just started up and has a very, very aggressive socio-economically disadvantaged profile that doesn't show up in their statistics because they don't offer school lunches, so they don't capture those statistics. So we have B, B, and C, but our restart schools that get charter-like flexibility, you know, I look forward to them being Bs, Bs, and Cs and not Ds, 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 right?
And that's our goal, that's 100% our goal. And so two of our sit goals is to reach proficiency and to exceed growth. And so we are on our way to doing that, but we just becoming restart this year for this next coming year will allow us to use those flexibilities. And so we're on our way to getting there and our team's working really hard. And I have no doubt that we're going to meet our goals.
I, I, well, and I appreciate that, I appreciate ambition and aggressiveness. And, you know, I know Principal Phillips sat right here a couple of years ago on our school improvement program, said, "We're going to make it A-rated." Well, okay, let's get the chin over the bar, right? But again, you know, I hear charter-like flexibility and I see additional funds, I see stuff like this, I'm not sure, I always see the personnel flexibility. You know, I'm not sure what the difference is, I just know that, you know, our, our charter schools tend to be in the As and Bs and our restart schools that offer charter-like flexibility, I'd look forward to them being the As and Bs. Just a couple of other things. So your only feeder school is Robbins Elementary, right? So what are your biggest challenges in Elise?
At Elise?
What are your biggest impediments to success, let me put it that way?
So I would say, you know, like Mr. Levy was saying earlier, is that our students are very sweet, they're hardworking, and so we're just trying to grow them. And so they're coming to us a couple of grade levels below, and so we're just trying to get them to grade level and then trying to get growth out of them.
Okay, any specific challenges, any resources that you need from the school board? What resources do you need?
I, I'm actually working with the instructional team right now with Donna and her team, and they provided quite a bit, any resources I've asked for, they provided for us as well. And so even looking at some of the elementary, like the core phonics to focus on some of those, she's provided that, she's looking at an intervention program. She's helping us with certain things that I think that she, she's, the county is already providing several resources for us and we're thankful for that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
From the board, so thank you.
Further questions, members of the board? Okay, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Priest.
Thank you.
Dr. Locklear, the extension of Microsoft A3 Education Enterprise subscription.
Yes, sir, and Mr. Ecklin will join us as well as Assistant Superintendent Jamie Signan for a couple of items that have to do with our technology needs and purchases for next year. And I'll, this one is specific to Microsoft licensure, so I'll turn it right over to Ms. Signan and Mr. Ecklin.
Good morning, everyone, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. Moore County Schools is in an A3 enterprise education agreement subscription with Microsoft. We're now at a time where we have to renew the, the contract for 12 or 36 months. We're just requesting because of, because of the, the pricing level, we're requesting board approval, we're looking at a 12-month renewal. We, what we're doing is continually assessing where technology is and rather than lock ourselves into a three-year, although it'll make us have to come back to you in a year if we decide to remain at this level of a subscription agreement. We just want to give ourselves that flexibility. The total cost of the renewal of the subscription agreement is $78,560.37, including tax. This is a cost reduction of $5,348.73 from our previous year as we've gone through and assessed our needs and realized that cost reduction.
Questions by members of the board?
So this is just for the year?
This is just for 12 months, yes.
Do you think if we did it, did they have a contract where if you did it longer, it'd be cheaper?
No, yeah, it's, it's the same price whether it's a 12-month renewal or a 36-month renewal, so.
Thank you.
What do, what do we do with Microsoft other than Windows?
It's the, it's the Windows server, it's the Windows license on the devices, it's the licenses for our servers, it's also our backend account, it's called Active Directory, that manages the accounts to log on to systems. We also, it also provides us Azure data services, which allows us a fully air-gapped cloud backup of our core data systems that makes sure that those systems are protected. And also provides Microsoft Office, we still, people are fairly heavy users of Microsoft Office, and this subscription level gives us the ability also as staff and student take-home license, so they can install Microsoft Office on their home computers.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions by members of the board? Are you done?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. How about, let's talk about refreshing Chromebooks for Areas 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. Levy.
Grade 6 through 12, I might have.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Levy. As the board is aware, we provide one-to-one devices in Grade 6 through 12 at all of our middle and high schools. We're coming up on the need to refresh those devices in the Union Pine High School feeder area, which is Area 1, and Area 2, which is Northmore Theater area. We are recommending an outright purchase versus a lease purchase. The board also may recall, in the past, we received a separate funding allotment from the county, $750,000 a year for technology devices and refreshes that now has been rolled in a couple of years ago into the overall funding from the county. And so we're looking for opportunities when these come forth. Can we first do an outright purchase, which we've leveraged ESER funds to do that, the COVID release funds for some other devices? But in this case, can, do we have funds where we can do an outright purchase? Because in the future, we'll have other refresh needs and we may have to go with a lease purchase model in the future. So when we can go with an outright purchase, it saves us money on the front end and it also prevents us from having multiple lease purchase invoices that come in each year. So we certainly want to avoid that if possible. So with that little bit of an introduction, I would note that this does come with my recommendation for this outright purchase. And I'll let Ms. Signan and Mr. Ecklin walk through this, including I think we're going to share the plan for refreshes, just to remind the board of that. This was also shared with the Budget Committee, at the Budget Committee, a meeting last week to discuss this and discuss where the funding's coming from. So, Ms. Signan?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Locklear. I will turn it over to Mr. Ecklin so he can go through his presentation.
Thank you. Dr. Locklear covered a, a great deal of the information already.
Sorry, Kent.
No, that's fine.
I got into preacher mode, sorry about that.
But as, as, as was linked with the board materials are, the Student Device Sustainability Plan was included, and that includes the refresh of the devices for Area 1 and 2. We're also including the Connect Academy and CLC's needs in this refresh, and that's 4,000 devices. Thanks to the support of Dr. Scott, Dr. Lisa Scott and Tina Edmonds, we've identified additional funding sources to include the $292,802 from the Rural, Rural Low Income Schools grant and also a reimbursement from the Medicaid Cost Report Funds of $915,318. And then we are using our FundAid Technology Fund again because the, the Digital Learning Fund doesn't really exist, it's part of our general funds. What we've been doing in FundAid is accruing a balance to use for, for needs such as this. So we're allotting $200,000, $200,000 of that fund towards this purchase. If we go with a full purchase, we will save over the four-year period $109,989 estimated based on our current interest rates for a purchase versus a lease purchase.
Any, any questions?
Kent, would you mind just reviewing this, this plan, refresh plan with the board?
So as you can see, it's the Area 1 and 2, Grade 6 through 12, these are the, the one-to-one devices that students take home every day. That's refreshed with, with devices, with a four-year warranty. Again, we're keeping with a four-year warranty, that's really the max. We get a four-year accidental damage protection warranty with the devices, and four years really is the life cycle that we're, excuse me, refining with those devices. In 24, I'm sorry, 25, 26, Areas, Area 3, that'll be West Pine Middle, Southern Middle and Pine Crest High School, those will be due for refresh. Again, we'll do the same thing with a four-year warranty. We will evaluate our funding sources at that time. This, this is, this is mapped out with the potential to do a lease purchase for 3,800 devices. But again, we will, we will look at what funding is available at that time and determine what the best path is for that. For the Grade 2 through 5 students, we have a reduced commitment of devices. We are one-to-one, three-to-five, but only one to three in, one to three in Grade 2. We're estimating in 2026, 27, we would need approximately 3,000 devices. But what we do is because we own the devices at the end of the, either the lease purchase or obviously the outright purchase, we look at what we have available for devices and use those because they're not going home every day, devices that are in good condition and then can be used in the elementary schools. And then we sort of extend the life and, and reduce the cost for the district as a whole. But that'll be in 26, 27, we'll be looking at that need.
Thank you, Kent.
Thank you.
Okay, members of the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The, sorry, I'm just formulating them. The, so the ones we currently have were leasing, right?
No, the, the ones we have in Area, in Areas 1 and 2, yes. Well, it's a lease purchase, it's not, it's not a true lease. We own them at the end, it's a, a $1 buyout is what they call it. We own them at the end of lease purchase, so we technically own them at this point.
Okay, okay, good. That's what I'm getting at. So, so if something, I'm going to just say the bottom line upfront, and everybody needs to carefully consider this, Vice Chair Davis, if you, okay. If something has a four-year life cycle, the way you save 20% is you make it last five years, right? And if you want to save 50%, you make it last six years. So let me ask you this, and keep in mind, at my work, you know, we have servers that are 15 years old and we have laptops that I bought off, refurbished that we bought off eBay eight or 10 years ago, and we still run Office 2007 because our needs have not changed. And, you know, Windows 10 is good enough, shoot, Windows 7 would be good enough, we just don't have that option anymore. So, but my point is, if we didn't purchase these, what applications would no longer run? I, I understand that they're no longer in warranty and they won't be replaced if they're damaged or lost, but if we don't replace these last, this year and we have, stretch them and give them another year of service life, which would save us 20% on $1.5 million, whatever this costs, what applications would not run on those?
Well, depending on the device, sometimes the, the, these will, at, at a certain point, they, they stop receiving security updates. And they also, when they stop receiving security updates, the, the applications that they use will, will also not run, run them.
When you say security updates, are you talking operating system updates?
It's operating system, yes.
Are these Windows 10 machines?
No, they're, it's, it's Google Chrome OS. And they have, they have, they have a fixed end of life on, on certain devices.
Right, when is the end of life for these, do you know?
I, I can investigate on that, they've extended that sometimes, but the other thing that we're facing with these is battery life issues because these students are expected to take them home and charge them, that if, if we were to extend them as a device that's taking home, then there's a huge investment both in battery installs, batteries themselves, but also in the labor to install this, to install these batteries. And they're also, the condition of the devices, because they've had four years of students taking them home, we don't have, the, the number of devices that we have that are functional that could get a fifth year is significantly reduced.
Yeah, so, look, there's a couple of things I know, I, I know that in terms of real dollars, we took a 20-plus billion-dollar haircut this year, right? You understand, our budget this year is $20 million less than it was last year in real dollars, something like that. I also realize that IT people, and I love what you do, I mean, you do a great job, you and your team. I've got a follow-on question on that as a matter of fact. You know, you guys do a remarkable job with what you have and I understand it. I, I just, you know, we're budget constrained and if we can squeeze an extra year out of these, especially if there's a buyout at the end. By the way, do we have to buy them at the end for a dollar or can we send them back?
Well, we, in, in the past, the, the, in, in, previously, we had a true lease on the very first cycle of devices that we had. That turned out to be not a good deal for Moore County Schools. It may be a case where you have adults that are leasing them and are taking care of them, but in the case where students are taking them home, you know, they're still learning to be responsible with their devices. If you, if, you know, the, the way that I say it glibly is, you know, the house always wins. When they make that agreement for a lease and they say, "You've got to send us back this many good devices," just a little side story, when we did that, I had to drive down to Georgia and argue with a warehouse full of people about the condition of the devices to try to reduce the cost of what they were expecting us to. It was a huge bill we had to go before the board and say, "We leased these, we made a commitment that they were going to get X number of devices back in good condition, this is the best we could get to" in our argument about what, what the definition of good condition is. And we determined, I mean, that as a district, it makes more sense to own them, carve out the devices that are still functional and say, "Okay, these can be spares for repairs, these can potentially be used in the lower grades, but what we need to do is refresh on a four-year cycle." We actually went from a three-year cycle to a four-year cycle. We made one stretch and that kind of was, okay, a stretch beyond four years is more, is more than we can, we can do at this point.
Okay.
I, I, oh, I'm sorry, I will say that we're, we're also doing efforts, we're looking at our repair rates and we're doing efforts in this coming year to say, you know, what else can we do to make sure the students take better care of these devices? What could we do to, to make sure they're in better conditions? So on the next cycle, we may be able to come to you with good news about saying, you know, maybe we reduce the, the, the number of devices that are available because they're in better condition. But we, I do not feel comfortable with that on, on this refresh cycle.
Okay, and what's the cost per device on this?
It's $329, including the Google licensing and the, the four-year accidental damage protection.
Okay, okay, and if I could shift gears a little bit. So you, you know, you were like the IT person of the world here in the last year. You got some big award, right, North Carolina?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it was just, it was just regional, I'm sorry.
Yeah, regional, you were the IT god of the year. Anyway, so let me ask you this, your facilities, you guys are housed up at the Ed Center. How would you classify your facilities on a scale of, I'm talking your work environment, from a scale of 1 to 10, your physical facilities?
I, I don't want to talk out of turn, but I will say that we have expressed our concerns with the condition of that building. That, that, that building is one of the oldest in the district at this time. And I'm comfortable that the Facilities Committee and Dr. Locklear are aware of this and are, and are working towards, and actually we've been with, with Ms. Purvis, we've also been expressing, this is what we have for needs. And they're already working with us on some of the condition issues related to that building, but yes, there are, you know, there are definitely some concerns there.
Okay, and are you aware of any currently funded or any initiatives underway to improve those conditions?
We've been working with the Maintenance Department in terms of the, the specific needs of the building, but we're also recognizing that mixes in with a lot of the discussions related to construction needs and, you know, construction needs for the students are always going to be a high priority as well. So we, we know that we have to balance that with all the other things you have to do for construction priorities. So we're just making sure that we're communicating that up through the, through the proper channels to make everyone aware.
Okay, and then finally, my, my last question related to this is, are there any disadvantages, there may be advantages to being away from the flagpole, but are there disadvantages to you being separate from the central office and not, you know, I mean, you guys are over there, the central office is here, you're kind of part of the staff. Is that to your detriment or do you like being away from the flagpole?
Well, I would say it has advantages and disadvantages. It's, it, the, I, I know in some districts that these, there, there's a, a central services building where all these things are combined. I think this is just a history of just the way things worked out in terms of building. I think there was some horse trading in years that got us the VAS warehouse. And so we've got our IT department there and the warehouse over in VAS. So it's really just a legacy of, of, of just past opportunities.
And where's this warehouse?
Oh, at VAS Lakeview. The old cafeteria is our IT warehouse.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And Maintenance actually shares part of that space as well with us, so. Thank you.
Just, just one thing. When we refresh our devices, he's talking about keeping them going for a little bit.
Right.
Since we own the devices or if they're a dollar lease, there, there are some devices that at the end of the lease are still good and in, in repair. And didn't you tell us that we give those to the lower grades sometimes?
Right, right, right.
So, so we don't just throw them out?
No, no, no.
Where we are kind of extending them as well.
Right, right, and we never, we never, actually, the, the last cycle- Right, right, and we never, actually, the last cycle, when we had devices that came in and were at the warehouse, we went through a surplus bid auction where we received money for those. And in some cases, it's, someone will bid on them to try to redeploy them and make them usable for reduced needs. Sometimes it's, they're bidding on them just because they're gonna grind them up for the precious metals, but we always do something to maintain, you know, obtain the, whatever residual value they are for those devices, whether they're usable or no longer usable.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought. So I appreciate that. Anything else?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, thank you for refreshing them. I think I voiced my opinion on this during the committee, but we do have a struggling computer at my house as we speak with some tape going around it. So I, I do appreciate that. And we're willing to pay for whatever was our fault as well, but, and I would say that this is, it is needed. I think, you know, they always say, you know, if you kick the can farther down the road, you're just paying more. And I think with your plan that you had up there, it's essential to do it now versus next year because then next year, we're gonna be doubling up, which would be Pinecrest. So I think that would be more of a funding loss for us. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. We stagger it not only for the funding purpose, but also because the labor is involved in doing a full refresh.
True, good point, yeah. Thank you.
One thing that caught my eye, one of my concerns is, I mean, my God, look at where we're scraping for money to pay for this, you know? If these, if these computers are important, again, I'm not making a judgment, I'm just commenting on the process and the budgeting process now. If these are like important and mission critical and we have to have them and they're ended life this year, boy, you know, we're taking money from rural income school funding, $300,000. We're taking $915,000 from Medicaid cost report funds and, you know, oh, look, we actually have $200,000 out of the 1.5 million that was actually budgeted for IT. So my, my, my point is, is if these are as mission critical as textbooks, only 12%, 15% of our funding is actually for IT. All the rest of the funding is coming from Medicare reimbursement and rural, low-income schools. My point is, if we're gonna have an IT section, we should have an IT budget and not having to scrounge and scrap for funds. I mean, next year, we're gonna be taking it out of the school lunch program or something. That's what caught my eye. Can we really afford this? Well, apparently we can if we take Medicaid funds and buy computers with it.
I did have, he just reminded me of something else. Um, the bags that go with the Chromebooks, do you find those essential? Because I will be honest, I don't really see any high school person using those. I see them putting them in their book bag.
Well, we, we continue to assess that. Every year, we poll that our students using those. I think it varies between the schools.
I see middle school, but high school, I don't really see.
Yeah, middle schools. The concern is, we, if they put them in their book bags, then they have books.
With tape on, with the, like mine?
Yeah, so, yeah.
That's just good to know. I just was curious if you guys do look at that or not. Thank you.
Okay, anything further, members of the board? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hackett.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Let's talk insurance. Dr. Lachler?
Yes, sir. Each year, we bring forward the renewal of our risk management coverage plans in a variety of areas. So Ms. Evans will be presenting that to the board today. It does come with my recommendation for approval, so I'll turn it right over to Mrs. Evans. Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, good morning.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is our 24, 25 risk management coverage plans. First, we have our property coverage, which is currently through the North Carolina Department of Insurance. The cost is $200,619, and this is an increase of $18,238, which is a 10% increase in premium compared to the prior year. The second item is for automobile and inland marine coverage. It is currently through Utica National Insurance Group, and Surrey Insurance is the broker. The cost is $70,899 in premium, and this is an increase of $3,376, which is a 5% in premium compared to the prior year. The third item is general liability. We currently, it's currently covered through the North Carolina School Boards Trust. The cost is $49,547 in premium. This is actually a decrease of $611 compared to the prior year. The next item is for cybersecurity. It is currently through Chubb. Surrey Insurance is the broker. The cost is $25,685 in premium, and this is an increase of $1,223, which is a 5% in premium increase from the prior year. The next item is workers' comp coverage, which is currently through Employers Mutual Casualty Company, which is Surrey Insurance being the broker. The cost is $215,829, and this is an increase of $10,278, which is a 5% in premium increase compared to the prior year. The next item is fidelity bonds, currently through Western Surity and Employers Mutual Casualty Insurance, and Surrey Insurance is the agent. When I originally wrote this, the cost was approximately $2,020 in total, but it is actually, we've got the information in, it is $2,100, which is a $100 increase or 5% compared to the prior year. Our student accident coverage is through QBE Insurance Group Limited, which is Agent Doug Young Group. And then there is Mutual of Omaha, which is North Carolina Department of Insurance. The cost is $32,984. $27,317 is QBE, and $5,667 is Mutual Omaha. There is not an increase when you compare to the prior year. The next item is CTE or OSC, Student Accident Coverage through NCDPI. The cost is $1,473. There is a $107 increase, which is 8% compared to the prior year. The next item is student field trip and volunteer coverage through NCSBA. The cost is $3,508 in premiums. $1,808 is for student field trip coverage, and there was a 5% increase, making it an additional $86.10. Then the $1,700, that is for volunteer accident coverage, there was no increase for that. The total estimated cost for the district risk management policies is $602,644, and this represents a $32,114 increase or 5%, and that is an average of 5% compared to the prior year.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, questions on insurance? Seeing none, I appreciate. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Two quick questions on the workers' comp insurance. The modifier rate is .87 to .89. I assume that's based upon our history with workers' comp?
It is, yes.
Is that rating good, bad, or do you know?
It is, it is very good.
It's very good, yeah, it seems. I suspect we have very few workers' comp. I don't know what the industry average is.
I'm not sure what the industry average is, but I know the amount that we're paying is very low, than, lower than I have seen in prior years and in other districts.
Yeah, okay, all right. I think that's my question, thank you.
Other members of the board? If not, thank you very much. Amended budget resolution, Ms. Evans, or Dr. Lachler, whoever's?
Yes, sir. As we do each quarter, bring an amended budget resolution based on any changes that have taken place since the last resolution that the board's approved. Ms. Evans is bringing this as a fourth quarter budget resolution. You'll see a final budget, amended budget resolution at your July 1 meeting as we close out the fiscal year. But I'll let Ms. Evans walk through the fourth quarter amended budget resolution.
This is our fiscal year 23, 24 budget resolution for the fourth quarter. The totals are by fund, as well as the total net increase or decrease since the last resolution. And this does go through allotment revision 66. So our state public school fund is now at $102,153,577, which is an increase of $11,620. Our local current fund is at $39,324,623, and that is, there is not a, no change. Our federal program fund is at $19,953,627, which is an increase of $16,820. Our local capital fund is at $6,743,253, and there is no change. Our school nutrition fund is at $8,375,988, there is no change. Our after-school care fund is at $1,500,000, and there is no change. Our local operations fund is at $10,677,344, which is an increase of $208,706. The estimated, the total amended budget is $188,728,412, which is an increase of $237,146. And if we can go to the fourth quarter budget revision details.
Was that $200,000 for the quarter?
It is actually from, it's the fourth quarter, but the way that the quarter has ran, this is for the month of May, just because it kind of got us behind with the budget being passed so late.
Okay.
So for our revision details, for the state public school fund, again, there is an increase of $11,620. PRC 11, which is substitutes for paid parental leave, it is an additional $11,620, and it is for, is coming from the guaranteed allotment for the PRC 11, and it is just making this up for our actual expenses. So that increases for actual expenses for the substitutes paid for parental leave. PRC 13 and 14 are ABC transfers from PRC 14 to PRC 15, excuse me, PRC 14 to PRC 13 due to vacancies. So it's just transferring from a position allotment to a dollar allotment, so those funds can be spent and not lost. And then we have our local current expense at zero. Our federal programs, the increase was $16,820.09. In Program 104, which is ESA Title I, our basic program, there was an increase of $4,530, and this was to update our revenue to actual in Budget Builder. And then PRC 108, that's the ESA Title IV, Student Support and Academic Enrichment, was an additional $259, which updates our revenue to actual in Budget Builder. PRC 111 is ESA Title III, English Language Acquisition. That was an additional $2,826, and that was approvals from 2-2, 2024, in allotment revision 42. PRC 146 is Light the Way Rethink Grant. That was an additional $3,980.09, and that is the 23, 24 allotment. Then we have PRC 198, which is the ARP, ESER III, NVPTS Certification B reimbursement of $5,225, and that is the 23, 24 allotment that we received in revision 65. Capital outlay, there was not, no increase. School nutrition, no increase. After-school care, no increase. And then for the restricted revenue fund, there was an increase of $208,705.95. For Program 305, which is the Medicaid Administrative Outreach Program, there was an additional $204,205.95, and that adjusts the revenues to actual for PRC 305. And then for PRC 352, which is our School Health Advisory Council SHAC grant, there was an additional $4,500, and that is the SHAC grant allotment. And then finally, we have our projected fund balance. So our projected, our fund balance as of June 30, 2023, was at $4,882,341. We had assigned for inventories $487,133, and assigned fund balance for fiscal year 2023, 24 of $2,173,000, which makes our total unassigned fund balance $2,222,208. Running our balance sheet through May 30, we had a net gain of $2,071,640.57. Our projected revenues through June 30 are $3,154,994.47. Our projected expenses through June 30 are $5,252, excuse me, $5,252,563.92, having a projected fund balance use of $25,928.88. Our projected unused fund balance, taking the assigned fund balance of $2,173, minus the projected fund balance use of $25,928, leaves us our projected unused fund balance for 23, 24 of $2,147,071.12. Plus our unassigned fund balance of $2,222,208 makes our projected fund balance for June 30, 2024, $4,369,279.12. When you remove the $2 million floor, that leaves us $2,369,279.12 above that $2 million floor.
We also have an unrestricted fund balance in Fund 8 of about $3 million projected. Am I correct, at the end of the year?
Yes, and we will be going over that in a presentation.
So that's part of the questions I have, is this was presented as, okay, here's our fund balance, and the last syllable wasn't even finished being echoed in this room before the chair said, oh, what about the Fund 8 fund balance? So what other fund balances do we have? And it did, I don't understand, because this is presented as, here's our fund balance. And I'm like, oh, okay, so we have an extra $2.3 million. And then again, the, hadn't even finished echoing when the chair says, what about the X millions of dollars in Fund 8? So what is our actual, why, if this is presented as fund balance, then why do we have other fund balances?
This is our local projected fund balance.
This is our, this is our fund balance of local funds.
Fund 10, that is correct.
So all, so that's one of the smallest sources of funding. And I think that's part of the problem that I have, and maybe members of the public have, is local funding is 20% of our funding, maybe? You know, it's state, local, and federal, right? We keep, our eyes keep getting focused on this, but then, you know, it's like when we discovered the $3 million previously undisclosed fund balance in the nutritional program, and now we have a Fund 8 fund balance. I would like to know what all of our fund balances are across all of our sources of funding, not just focusing for some weird reason only on local funding. Because here's another example that I was gonna ask you a question on, but I think I just answered it. I think the chair just answered it. Right here, it says we're spending $25,000 projected fund balance use, but just in the previous technology presentation, we're taking $915,000, almost a million dollars out of Medicaid reimbursement. So that was obviously a projected fund balance, right?
That's actually quite funding, I believe.
Yeah, Fund 8 is a separate fund that we have, that we get, we put funds that, the reason it's restricted revenue, because it's reimbursement based on services we provide. And, and we've had, we've discussed Fund 8 before. We had some additional discussion at our Budget Committee last week, just to make sure it's clearly understood what Fund 8 is, and what we have in Fund 8, and what we project a year down the road, what we'll have left in Fund 8. And that'll be part of our budget update today. But it's, it's funds that have, that have come through reimbursement processes or through revenue, miscellaneous revenue, like rebates that we get off of using purchasing cards or things of that nature. And so that's built up over time, and that's, that's why we have some fund balance in different PRCs and Fund 8.
I mean, we're being asked to spend a million dollars of it next week, so I assume it's more than a lot, it's quite a bit, right? So what is the fund balance in Fund 8? Because we also, where's the accrual for the school buses? You know, if we're doing accruals for the depreciation of school buses, what account is that in? Is, are, can I, where can I look and see our accrual for those?
It's in Fund 8.
Okay, so that's part of today's brief?
There's a, Tina's gonna walk through the entire fund, every PRC.
On Fund 8?
What's, what we'd say is, has a restricted use to it, and what we would say has an unrestricted use to it, means we could use it for any purpose. The $915,000 that we're recommending be used for part of the refresh purchase is a, out of a PRC that has an unrestricted use. We could use it for any purpose.
Okay, so that's, so that's 3A, right? That's the budget update?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Wait for that, then, thank you.
Other questions, my members of the board? Okay, Ms. Evans, go ahead. On the next item, which is the... For, on the next item, which is um, uh, the um...
Continuing budget resolution.
Continuing budget resolution, and...
And this is simply to, to note to the board, um, and get your endorsement that we'll be operating with a continuing budget resolution uh, into the new fiscal year until a state budget is, is finalized. Um, and you approve your original budget for the next fiscal year. But I didn't mean to steal your thunder, Tina, but I think this is a pretty straightforward uh, request upon the board for endorsement. So, Tina?
So this is our continuing budget resolution for twenty-four, twenty-five, and this recommendation is based on the most recent June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four amended budget resolution for twenty-three, twenty-four. And it will allow more county schools to continue processing accounts payable and payroll into the net new fiscal year pending passage of a revised state budget. The estimated timeframe in which to present the twenty-four, twenty-five original budget resolution will depend on when more county schools receives the original state budget allotments for the twenty-two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year from North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. In the two most recent years, the original budget um, has been presented in October and December respectively. Our total continuation budget is a hundred and eighty-eight million, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred twelve dollars.
Um, yes, uh, any, any questions by the board? Okay. I don't mean to skip over that, but was, Mr. Hensley, was this where you wanted to talk about uh, those, those fund balances? At the what? Oh, oh, I see what you're talking about, okay. I, I stand corrected, because I thought it was, I thought that was what was going to be presented just now. Okay, but let's go ahead uh, with the um, uh, school board meeting agenda for June tenth. Let me go back and see what...
There's one more item, Mr. Chair.
Is it? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Uh, it's just uh, an item I'm bringing forward today around um, board meeting calendar revision for July first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, uh, I thought that was, yeah, I, I misread that. Go ahead, Dr. Waters.
Thank you, sir. Uh, just bringing to the board my requests um, to revise the calendars to make sure we're posting it and noticing it correctly uh, for July first. Uh, as the board knows, July first is a combined work session, regular business meeting. Um, it's anticipated that uh, we will have only just a few items for the board to review at its work session, and then we would be able to go immediately into closed session to take care of those items needed to be taken care of closed session, and then immediately upon coming out of that, could go right back into uh, our business meeting to complete the work of the day. So uh, this could potentially be a meeting, total meetings in, in combination. You know, we potentially could be done in just two to three hours because of uh, just that we don't have a lot of items on that July meeting. We only try to take care of what we absolutely have to on that July meeting. So it's, it's a request to revise the calendar to be note, to be noticed that the work session will be at one PM. Regular business meeting will begin immediately upon conclusion of the work session. Uh, and we'll have a note on there, a sign-up sheet for members of the public who wish to speak in person will be available from the beginning of the work session at one o'clock until five minutes prior to beginning of the regular business meeting on the day of the meeting at um, the central office.
All right.
Any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions on, on that calendar matter? Yes, Mr. Hensley?
I oppose it, and I'll tell you why. Uh, we start having business meetings during the workday, and that is something that we've never done. We've never had business meetings, I, I mean, I guess there's been special call meetings. Uh, but we've never had a regular, that I am aware of, a regular scheduled business meeting where the public expect, expects to be able to show up and observe and talk if need be. We've never had that during the workday, and uh, that is a precedent that I'm not willing to set.
Would it be at four o'clock? Is that what yours, it would still be at four o'clock?
Well, it could, it could start earlier.
Yeah, after we get out of closed session, go right into the business meeting, is what I got out of it.
Well, this is a unique, this is a unique meeting. It's a combined work session, business meeting. It's also unique because it's happening, it's that July meeting.
I'm not saying, look, I'm not saying anyone will want to show up because it's July first. I'm just saying that we owe it to the public that, you know, we've said we've run on people being able to speak, and I'm not for having a business meeting started before uh, the end of the normal workday.
The way it's currently, the way it's currently noticed is a one PM work session start. You then would go to closed session at four. That's the way it's currently noticed, the closed session, you know, and then our regular business meeting starting at five-thirty. That's where it's currently noticed uh, to, to roll. Um, this is to give the board the flexibility and our staff the flexibility to be able to have a work session and then continue to roll right into the business meeting.
We don't have to vote on that today, we can vote on that.
That would be a matter for the board to take up next week.
Next week, okay. Just want to make sure about that. Okay, any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Um, on what we just discussed, would there be any way of, to do a sample of what maybe would be on the agenda in July? Not anything like concrete, but if there was a sample of this and this maybe on the agenda, um, would just give us, I think, as a board, a better idea of, of what we're looking at as far as length of time as well?
Yes, ma'am, happy, at, at this point, from the top of my head, and Cindy, tell me if I'm missing something, but I think our one business item will be um, the revised fourth quarter budget resolution as we close out our fiscal year, that Tina will be bringing forth. We will have a couple information items that we'll be sharing. One of those will be our academic update, which will focus on our work over the summer from an instructional and academic standpoint. And then also our fourth quarter discipline update, uh, because that would give us the opportunity to close out the year and then get, bring that update to the board. We may have one other matter of business to take up with the board um, based on um, sit, based on where we are with the activity buses that the board approves back in last August, and the ability to get seat belts for those, uh, and also use ESER funding. So I may be bringing a, a matter to the board to waive seat belts for those activity buses so we can use our ESER funds, that, those have to be used by September. Uh, but we're waiting to see if, uh, from the manufacturer, if we're going to get those buses with seat belts. And if we are, we'll just move forward with that, won't need to bring that matter forward. But I may need to bring that matter forward to the board as well. So that's, if there, there's not, right now, a lot of matters uh, on the meeting agenda.
Anything further? Okay, hearing nothing further now, let's go to the um, school board meeting agenda for uh, June tenth. Uh, let's do it this way. Um, if, what, what you want on the consent agenda. I, obviously, we're going to have to vote on Sub A, which is the first reading, this is the reading of the new revised policies. Um, the playgrounds, a vote of consent.
I think um, David wanted her to bring something to um, to view, so I think that should be action. So he would have a chance to look at that.
Right, okay, first two items are action. Uh, the stage curtains, action or consent?
Action.
Action. Uh, the bleacher replacements, action or consent?
Action.
The agreement to amend the cell tower lease, action or consent? Consent, consent? Uh, child nutrition, uh, including the ice cream, action or consent, consent? Okay, uh, approval of uh, learning intervention purchases, action or consent? It's those workbooks, I guess, consent, consent? Um, exceptional children's services contracts, action or consent? Consent?
Action.
Action, action it is. Uh, Elise Middle School...
I did, I did ask for uh, uh, a full-time equivalence for each one of those positions, to be able to talk about those.
Yes, sir, I think Mr. Waters discussed that, but we can get a little email out to the whole board.
Summary before, I, I didn't take detailed notes, but, you know, I mean, I could add up the hours if I knew how much the hours were. I just failed to write them down.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, so looking at Mike, uh, we'll get a little email summary we can get out to the board.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Yep.
We, but you still wanted this on action, am I correct? Okay, uh, Elise Middle School, um, action or flexibl, action, action or consent? Consent, okay. Uh, extension of Microsoft contract, consent? Consent it is. Uh, refresh the student Chromebooks, uh, action or consent? Consent? Uh, risk management, consent? It is. Uh, amendment of the fourth quarter budget, action or consent? Consent, all right. Uh, continuing budget resolution for twenty-four, twenty-five, action or consent? Consent, all right. Uh, the board meeting calendar revision, I guess that is action. Okay, now...
I do have one change.
Yes, sir.
Elise Middle School calendar flexibility, let's make that action, please.
Okay, that is I, which is Elise's calendar, Elise Middle School would be action. Okay, uh, Dr. Lackler, our budget update?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, is it okay if I join, Ms. Edmonds?
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, board members. Um, appreciate the opportunity to bring you a budget update for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, where we currently are with that. Uh, we had the opportunity uh, to meet with the Board Budget Audit and Finance Committee last week and this, and bring this update to you. Appreciate Mrs. Edmonds' work to put this together. Uh, the timing of this update is to bring you information related to the county manager's um, recommended budget that he presented to the Board of Commissioners uh, on the twenty-first of May. Uh, and also to bring you any information or any intel, so to speak, we have on where the state budget currently is. Um, which there hasn't been a lot of information that's come or a lot of movement on that. Uh, but from what we're hearing, uh, it's more than likely it's going to stay where the biennial budget uh, was approved last, last October. Uh, so this, this one page sliding of slide, and this is a very brief update, it's only two or three slides. Uh, but this one slide here represents information related to um, the local budget increase that was part of your preliminary budget that you approved uh, in April. And then the red highlighted portion is the portion that we feel some confidence of where we will land uh, once the state budget is finalized. Uh, because what we're hearing is that we're probably going to stay with what the biennial budget approved last October, which is a three percent increase in salary. Uh, so that's why that's highlighted in red. Uh, then the, the two far right uh, columns represent scenarios if we saw salary increases uh, at the state level. So that's what those represent, is just simply scenarios that could be driven by uh, the state budget. However, um, you'll see um, in that red highlighted c- column, the updated information from the county manager's recommended budget, and then how much projected fund balance the board would need to appropriate to bring forward a balanced budget. Uh, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to uh, Mrs. Edmonds, let her walk through uh, what this is updating the board with, uh, and then we'll move on to a couple other slides and a little more information. As Mr. Hensley and I were discussing earlier, we'll also be updating around Fund Eight and where we are with that, so. Ms. Edmonds?
Um, this is our updated projected fund balance appropriation for fiscal year twenty-five. The first column is the preliminary budget that our board did approve. Um, and that preliminary budget, just a reminder, it was for fixed costs associated with projected state increases in salaries, retirement, and health insurance contribution rates. Um, it was based on a three percent increase for certified and a three percent increase for classified, which was the biennial, biennial budget. Um, that total was one million, two hundred seventy-five thousand. Our local supplement step increase for teachers, or excuse me, for certified staff was three hundred thousand. All other projected fixed cost increases with a five percent inflation rate was at three hundred fifty thousand. Our projected charter school growth based on that five-year average was two hundred seventy-five thousand, and our fund balance appropriated in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for reoccurring costs was one, two million, one hundred seventy-three thousand. And we did have some budget efficiencies of six hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, bringing our total fixed cost to three million, seven hundred forty thousand, two hundred dollars. And we did project our county appropriation funding formula. It was based on three percent um, by Mr. Vest at the county. That was a modest uh, model that he had used originally. So we did use that same model of one million, three, one million, one hundred thirty thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars, leaving us to project our fund balance appropriation at two million, six hundred nine thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars. We do have in the red column the updated um, information based on the county manager presentation. So everything for our total fixed cost would stay the same. They still, based on that three percent certified, three percent classified increase, um, the total fixed costs are three million, seven hundred forty thousand, two hundred dollars. But the county did come in about one point nine percent above um, their, their projected, their budget came up one point nine percent as an increase, which would bring our county funding appropriation funding formula down to five hundred, ten thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars. Increase in our projected fund balance appropriation to three million, two hundred thirty thousand, seventy-five dollars. Now, when you look at those scenarios, which are driven by the state budget, if we were to receive a five percent on top, a total five percent increase um, for certified and a total five percent increase for classified, that would um, bring our fixed costs for those salaries to one million, five hundred seventy-five thousand, and it would also increase our local supplements to three hundred eighty thousand. Everything else staying the same, our total fixed cost would, would now be four million, one hundred twenty thousand, two hundred dollars. With that same projected county appropriation funding formula, five hundred, ten thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars would make our projected fund balance appropriation three million, six hundred, ten thousand, seventy-five dollars. And then if we were to see a eight percent increase for certified and a six percent for classified, that does increase our total fixed cost to four million, five hundred sixty thousand, two hundred dollars, um, increasing our projected fund balance appropriation to four million, fifty thousand, seventy-five dollars to balance our budget. And just a note, I have it on the bottom, um, we are hearing where there may be some one-time bonuses. So, one of the, one of the items that was, um, I think in the governor's budget, was a fifteen hundred dollar bonus for employees making less than seventy-five thousand, and a one thousand dollar bonus for employees making greater than seventy-five thousand. And this is a one-time bonus, but our local cost for that with benefits would be two hundred fifty-seven thousand. So we would need to add that number if that does happen to our projected fund balance appropriation.
Let me, let me make sure we know that this, we don't have any intelligence, for lack of a better term, that, uh, that's actually going through the legislature, am I correct?
No, sir, I've seen no, no information update coming out of the state legislature yet. Um, Tina heard that the, the idea of the bonuses uh, from some of her colleagues, I believe, uh, that's heard some of that. I've, I've not heard anything, no, sir.
One of the problems is, and I just wanted the public to understand, that uh, the way the budgeting is done through the state is absolutely backwards because the state goes last, uh, and the county goes second to last, and we go first. And yet, which should be the state goes first, the county goes second, and we go last because we have to know what we're, what we have to pay uh, before we budget. But that's not the law. And one of these days, I hope that um, our legislators will change that to make it look more logical and easier. Uh, not just for, not just for school boards, but also for the county. Go ahead, was, was there, go, go ahead, Ms. Edmonds. Let me interrupt.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Our projected fund balance for Fund Two, um, when you look at, starting on the left side, our projected unused fund balance um, signed for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and it has been updated um, using that twenty-five thousand dollars use, um, is two million, one hundred forty-seven thousand, seventy-one dollars. Our unassigned fund balance is two million, two hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, um, having a projected fund balance for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four of four million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars. In the board-approved preliminary budget, um, our fund balance appropriation was estimated to be two million, six hundred nine thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars, which would leave us a twenty-four, twenty-five projected fund balance in Fund Two of one million, seven... which would leave us a twenty-four, twenty-five projected fund balance in Fund Two of one million, seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars. And then in the red, this is updated based on that county manager presentation, that would change our projected fund balance to one million, one hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and four dollars. If we, in the salary scenarios, salary increase scenarios for the five percent, that would bring our projected fund balance down to seven hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and four dollars. And then if we had the eight percent certified and the six percent classified, that would bring our local Fund Two fund balance down to three hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
And I would just note, in all of those scenarios, if that's where we end up, it would require in the original budget resolution for the board to waive the requirement of keeping at least two million in local fund balance at floor. It would require the board to waive that in the original budget resolution or assign some cost to Fund Eight to keep it at two million. So I would just note that as we move forward with information and as we bring our original budget to you, Ms. Edmonds and myself, it may require that wa, waiver.
But once again, we expect a three million dollar unrestricted fund balance in Fund Eight, am I correct?
That's the next slide, I'll let Tina walk through, yes, sir. And we shared this with the Board Budget Committee last week. We know we get questions from time to time, what is Fund Eight? What's it, what's it, how do you collect funds in Fund Eight, what's the purpose there? You know, transparently, Fund Eight is allowed by law as restricted revenue fund on funds that we reimburse or we get revenue from, from our current students and our current expenditures on our current students. And so this is the only fund that our charter schools don't get part of, so to speak, across the state. So this is Fund Eight as a restricted revenue standpoint. We're able to put those funds that are reimbursed, again, on our current kids and on current costs, go into these funds because the charter schools aren't serving these kids. And so that's why we were able to have this restricted fund. I'm going to ask Ms. Edmonds, if you would, to walk through each of those PRCs and also talk about if there's any restriction for that. What this chart lays out is where we project we'll be at the end of this year, what recurring expenses we already have in that, in that fund coming out of these funds. So therefore, where we project we'd be at the end of the next fiscal year. So I think I described that correctly, Tina. I'm, I'm, and I think you have a question, Mr. Levy, I apologize, go ahead.
No, just to make sure charter schools have their own reimbursements as well or, or the ability to get them if they wish.
They would be able to, yes, sir.
So we're not, we want to make sure the public understands we're not holding back anything. That, that is just, and, and also remind the public, we are Saint Elsewhere. So we have to educate everyone. And that is where some of these Fund Eight funds come from as well. Things like Medicare and things like that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody knows that.
Yes.
Go, go ahead.
Thank you, Tina.
Just to note, in my, the bottom portion, I just want to note that when we're looking at reoccurring expenses, you won't see reoccurring revenues because they are very unstable. So it does not include any revenues reoccurring. And then, this is just an example, the second one. May eighth, we had received a letter saying we were going to receive eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars. That was for that Medicaid cost report. But as of May thirtieth, I haven't checked this morning, but we had not received that check and it comes by check. So anyway, just, just letting you know, it is unstable. And, and the year before, we only received five hundred thousand. So that's what a difference the money can come in at.
Which one are we talking about, I'm sorry?
That was for the Medicaid cost report, that PRC three oh four that's showing on there. So that was just one example. Now, we'll start with PRC twelve, that is our driver's education. We have a projected balance of, for June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-four of a hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred twenty dollars, sixty-nine cent. We have twenty-six thousand, five eighty-eight, ninety-eight in reoccurring payroll. And we have non-payroll that's reoccurring of five thousand available. We potentially see available as of June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-five. We see a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars, seventy-one cent. And that is restricted to driver's education because that money is collected as fees for the students that participate in driver's education. PRC fifteen is technology. The projected balance is for, for June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-four is four hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred nine dollars, ten cent. There's no payroll that's set up as reoccurring, but there is some non-payroll contracted expenses. So June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-five, there should be an, it's estimated to have four hundred seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. And that is restricted to use for technology because, again, those fees are collected for students for technology fees. PRC three oh four is that Medicaid cost report. Right now, the projected fund balance is one million, three hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars. We do have some non-payroll recurring expenses in there, bringing our available one-year down to nine hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred seventeen dollars. And it does not have any restriction. PRC three oh five is Medicaid reimbursement. The projected fund balance for June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-four is one million, six hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars. There is some payroll reoccurring and some non-payroll. Our available is of June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-five, the available amount, the projected available amount is eight hundred seventy thousand, two hundred and six dollars. There is no restriction. PRC three oh six is Medicaid services, is the fee for service. There is four hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars, forty-six cent is our projected fund balance as of June thirtieth. We do have some non-payroll reoccurring expenses. And then as of June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-five, we bring that down to four hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars. And that is restricted for the use for EC because it is fees that are charged for EC services. PRC three oh eight, that is federal impact aid. That projected balance is nine hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars, eighty-one cent. There is some reoccurring expenses for payroll and non-payroll, bringing that available one-year as of June thirtieth, two thousand, twenty-five, down to two hundred fifty thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. And there is no restriction on the federal impact aid. PRC three fif, three forty is AYPYN grant for after-school. The projected balance is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars. We do not have any reoccurring expenses. But the balance we, we see, we expect to see is a hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars. But that money is for use for AYPYN. PRC four oh four is preschool tuition, is two hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-six cent. We don't have, there's no reoccurring expenses. There may be some payroll in there, I'm just sitting here thinking, there may be some payroll in that one. But when you, when you combine that one with the pre-K, because one offsets the other, those are for use for pre-K and they are restricted.
So I have a question on that, since we just covered it. I have lots of questions, I've been holding until the end. But we just talked about pre-K, you know, several agenda items before where just doing math in our head, you know, say we spend, you know, it costs us a thousand dollars a month to educate a child, right? And I just, we'll just use as a planning figure, we're charging four hundred and twenty dollars a month tuition. We get four hundred and sixty-five dollars or whatever reimbursed from the state. Just doing the math in the head, we're doing that at half of our cost or the state's reimbursing us from half the cost. Well, you see that in a negative number up there. But you also see that our preschool tuition has a positive balance. And you might ask yourself, well, gosh, how can you have a positive balance if you're operating at a loss? Well, first you have to assume that my assumptions are correct, which they may not be. But the other possible explanation is that we don't have all of our costs in there. And, and, you know, you can see that there should be some payroll costs in there. Well, there should also be other overhead costs. You've got, you've got the use of the facilities, you've got the electricity, you have all that. So when we, let's just take preschool tuition and, and the pre-K program. You've got the revenues in there, but are those properly expensed out? Because if we, if we have a pre, if we have a pre-K school program, let's say at, at Pinehurst Elementary, you know, there's the cost of that, of that room, there's the cost of the lights, there's, there's the cost of the power. So are we properly accounting for the cost of these? Or are we just putting these revenues in the account and not offsetting it with the cost of administering the programs?
So you cannot charge indirect costs too, N C pre-K, is my understanding?
Okay, but we also have the line above it preschool tuition. So you have indirect costs there. And we don't even have, and, you know, you mentioned that there's no payroll up there. Well, you got a payroll if you got a, if you got a pre-K. And I just heard it was eleven schools, so that, that implies at least eleven employees. And let's say they're part-time, that's four, that's four hundred thousand dollars a year in payroll.
I do think that I've got a couple of these that may be missing, be reoccurring as I'm looking at it. So I, I really need to re, when I, I can, I can bring this back and represent it if needed.
I don't know.
But the, there may be some reoccurring, I'm just sitting here looking, I think there may be some. The workers' comp piece, I know there's a piece there, I noticed as I was looking down. And so, yeah, I'm thinking that could be something that we need to do. But as far as indirect costs, I can't charge for their use for the lights and the things that you're talking about. That's not something I can charge to that program.
Well, we can certainly charge it to the line above it. So, look, we need, we need to know, if, if we were a business entity, we would want to know what that program costs us. And that's why you allocate overhead and utilities and stuff so that you've got it on a per project. But I guess this chart fundamentally has questions because if you look at the, the third column there, you have projected balance as of the end of this, this fiscal year. And then you have recurring expenses. Well, if it's a projected balance, you've probably already taken care of the, the, the projected expenses for this year. And in the case of, you know, I guess I don't understand the, if you have revenue to match it. You know what I'm saying, you can't just subtract the, the recurring expenses from the projected balance and have an available one-year unless you also have a column of projected revenues. And I know you mentioned some of them are unstable, but certainly the, the preschool tuition, we know how much that's going to be.
So I think you may have answered one of my questions on why I may not put some of the recurring costs.
Is, is there taking?
Is because the revenues, there, there would be revenues on some of these. And that is, that is one of them, that preschool tuition. The revenues, because the expenses and revenues kind of goes hand in hand, I did not put anything in there. That should be our true balance at the end of June, two thousand, twenty-four. So all things, as long, you know, if, if we had no other, if the revenues matched the expenses, I guess my, my thinking, and I should have made a note of it, that is why I'm showing that available amount. That should be, so it, but it is still used for preschool. It's not something that we could use as, it has to be used specifically on the preschool program. It's not, there's, there's not a, it's not unrestricted, I guess is what I'm saying.
Again, I'm just trying to understand, get increased fidelity. But let's just take preschool tuition, you know, if that's a hundred percent revenue neutral, then you're right, in, in June of twenty twenty-five, we're going to have a two hundred and forty-one thousand dollar surplus. But I'm not sure that's regative, reg, negative revenue neutral, you know? I, I, I think we're losing money there if we actually account for all the costs. The only way that makes money is if we don't properly account for all the costs. Or, you know, the odds of all that stuff being revenue neutral are slim to none, is kind of my point.
One way or the other, you're correct. Yeah, yes, sir. I think Tina's point earlier is that we, we can't, we, it's hard to predict the level of rev, forecast the revenue because of a good bit of this is reimbursement. And so it's very difficult to predict whether the impact aid reimbursement and the Medicaid reimbursement. We certainly look at five-year trends and things of that nature. And Tina and I look at that often when we're looking at recurring costs. You know, trying to make sure with recurring, we're very strategic about it. We don't overextend ourselves. That's why this is a fund that, that does make sense, one-time costs, one-time purchases out of this, this type of fund as well.
Look, forecasts are forecasts, and at the end of the day, you make your assumptions and then here's our forecast. As long as that's thoroughly understood and people understand that that's fine. I just, I'm trying to understand what all the assumptions are and limitations, so, okay.
And the eight hundred thousand for Medicare reimbursement is not yet in there, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so when that check comes, the check is in the mail, I've heard that before. Well, we're going to put that in there. And that should raise our fund balance about eight hundred thousand dollars, at least in Fund Eight, am I correct? Okay, thank you.
So then PRC eight oh two is our miscellaneous revenue, is at one million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars, and it is not restricted. Workers' compensation, there's seven thousand, seven sixty-nine, this is the balance, that's what I projected, that's in there because we've already made those, for this year, we've already paid workers' comp out of there. So our available is that seven thousand, seven sixty-nine. Our homeless college, there was a donation of eleven hundred twenty dollars. And that would need to, that would actually be spent whenever we have a homeless, there's some homeless college tuition that we can reimburse for. Our, that is restricted for the homeless college tuition. Our out-of-county is eight oh two dot oh three, is sixty-six thousand, fifty dollars and three cents, there is no restriction. PRC eight oh seven is curriculum and instruction, is the NCIC consortium. There's forty-two thousand, eighteen dollars, and we must spend that on NCIC consortium.
And that was a previous instructional grant that the school district had, and then there had to be some matching funds accrued. And that's what's left of those accrued matching funds.
Then we have PRC eight oh eight, which is STEM and robotics, there's sixty thousand, nine hundred twenty dollars and fifty-five cent, and it is restricted for STEM, that is fees that are collected for various, or even grants. I think some of the grants that they're able to receive. PRC eight sixty-nine is for safety. That is money that we've generated for indirect costs from that RTA, or it's the REACH associates that are the, we're the fiscal agent.
Not the REACH association, this is the, the literacy coaches that the state employs. And we're the fiscal agent, we agreed to be the fiscal agent for that across the Sandhills region. And so we, we got, I think, sixty thousand dollars the first year and maybe fifty-five thousand the second year, this current year. And I asked Tina to set that up as a, a fund specific for safety needs, whether that be to support our school police or other safety needs.
There is no restriction for that, that money is still sitting there. If you look at all the blue items in total, we do have three million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and ninety-two cent, that is unrestricted.
Questions?
I have some questions, going back to the first slide. The next slide has questions. So some are just, some are just observations, and then I have some questions. The first thing I'd like to say is budget efficiencies, right there. I don't know, fourth or fifth line from the bottom. So, interesting thing. In other words, those would be called cuts. Except if memory serves me correctly, we didn't actually make any cuts in positions, we put positions on hold, is that correct?
That's correct, did not load them in the next year's budget.
Right, so, so in reality, we didn't, it's difficult to say we didn't make any budget cuts because there were temporary positions that went away, which we kept our word on.
Well, actually, these are, these are not those, but you were, we had some of that as well. These, these are positions that have been vacant. That we, that we held vacant, we had a couple of digital integration facilitator positions that were vacant. We never rehired for the Assistant Director of Crickelman, excuse me, Assistant Director for Communications. So those, those were positions there that, that were vacant. Also, there's a curriculum specialist position that's currently vacant, that we essentially froze and did not load in the next year's budget.
Yeah, so, so my point is, is that, is that we really didn't make any cuts. We just put, and I'm not, again, I'm not making any judgments on the wisdom of any of those positions, just that we didn't make cuts, we just held them in abeyance. The, the interesting thing is when you get down there, highlighted in blue where it says projected fund balance appropriation. In the business world, that would be highlighted red and that would be called a deficit. In, in government speak, it's an appropriation, but in reality, that's our local fund deficit. We are, we are deficit spending our local fund three point two million dollars. Um, it just, it's not called a deficit, but that's our local fund operating deficit for this year, am I correct?
To balance our budget, assuming full employment, yes, sir.
Right, yes, assuming full employment, which is a big assumption too. Um, okay, um, so let me say this, and I've been very consistent on this. You can talk about how many employees you need, you can talk about what employees you need, but it is every employer's responsibility, uh, to make sure their people are adequately paid. And in a high inflationary environment, an inflationary environment, it is an employer's responsibility, and it's tough uh, to make sure that, uh, wages, uh, keep pace with inflation. I, I do it with my companies, it's very difficult because we've gone through a period of high inflation and, you know, I can't do it all at once, but I can do it in chunks, you know? Uh, I personally, in my companies, I'm given much higher annual pay raises, hopefully in the three years to get my people caught up with the effects, the previous effects of inflation. We don't control that, right? Obviously, that's controlled by the General Assembly, I have huge, and it's their fiduciary responsibility to ensure that at a minimum, all federal, all state, uh, in this case, employees, uh, purchasing power is kept whole through inflation. Uh, that didn't happen this last year, and they did a buy and, buy, you know, a two-year thing, which is extraordinarily, you know, the annual pay raises should have been six percent, not, uh, three percent. They should have been six to eight percent, just to keep people, whether you're a fan of government spending or not, you know, they're, they're, they're our employees, they're our team members, we have to do it, they failed to do that. But here's my point, they very well could have done that, and they're going to get political pressure. I was driving out to the mountains this weekend, and I saw the big North Carolina teacher pay, teacher billboards everywhere. And they deserve, every, every employee, anyway, um, so here's my point. They very well could have passed an eight percent, uh, certified and a six percent classified, uh, pay raise. And if they would have done that this year, our local deficit would have gone from three point two million to four million dollars. And there's one reason for that, and the, the reason for that is we have the wrong local funding formula. And I've said this before, and I argued till I'm blue in the face, and I'm going to keep mentioning it until I'm this blue in the face. Because the fact of the matter is, this school board, over my objection, agreed to a funding formula that has nothing to do with the factors that increase our, our costs. At the local level, the local funding level, there are two things that, that dictate our increase in, in, uh, funding, in need for funding. The first is the pay raise given to the, uh, given to, um, school employees by the, by the, uh, General Assembly, and the second thing is inflation. That's all we spend our local school funding on, is people and things. And the correct funding formula would have been to tie it to the increase in, the percentage increase in wages, and then for everything else, just apply inflation. And had we done that, there wouldn't be a deficit. We would have gotten, uh, exactly what our increase in cost would have been, there, and there would be no deficit. But instead, what was adopted was a, and we could go back and watch these videos because you can watch the chair argue vigorously about this, and I'll tell you his exact words here in a minute. The chair argued vehemently and convinced the rest of the board to, to adopt a funding formula based upon the tax revenues of Moore County, and his exact words were, "I'm going to bet on Moore County." Well, unfortunately, that was the wrong bet, because as I predicted, what I predicted came to pass. And Chair Levy arguing for this said, "Oh, you can look, property values are going up, people are building like crazy, there's going to be a windfall of property taxes." And then his argument was, and he convinced the rest of the board of, which by the way, three of them aren't even here today, um, that they convinced the rest of the board of was, "Well, gosh, if the increase in property taxes doesn't get us a boatload of cash," that's my words, not his, "then, um, you know, look at all the sales tax, look at all the retail." And at that time, I made the following argument, and it's come to pass, is that a conservative-minded county commissioners, what they would do is they would look and they would fi- figure a growth. "We're going to grow our county government one point nine percent, we're going to grow whatever, three percent this year." And when property taxes go up, when the tax base goes up, what they, what any conservative board would have done, they did. They took the increase in sales tax, they took the increase in the property tax base. And I tried to warn the board this three or four times in open session, I argued passionately about this. They would take those increases, and that might have been, if they kept the tax rate the same, that might have been a fifteen, twenty percent tax, you know, increase in taxes, which we would have come out okay. But that's not what a conservative board does. What a conservative board did was, they said, "We're going to take that increase in property tax, we're going to take that increase in sales tax, and we're going to use it to cut the property tax rate so that the property taxes, the actual taxes go down for, for low and middle-income, uh, property owners." And then our overall budget's only going to increase, in this case, one point nine percent. And that's, that's exactly what I predicted, and that's exactly what's come to pass. And that's why right now, we're sitting at a three point two million dollar, uh, budget deficit. And it didn't have to be this way, had the board negotiated a funding formula based upon the things that actually, uh, increase our costs, which are the increase in wages and inflation, then we would have zero deficit right now. Couple of questions, specific questions, um, if we go down to the, uh, the last slide, please.
Fun, the fun eight.
Yes, sir, okay, right there. So earlier I asked about, one of, one of, the very first school board meeting I attended, uh, we talked about, um, well, I was shocked because we had activity buses, and we had to buy activity buses, and they were, and I remember Chair Levy, him and I both complained about this very first meeting at McDees Creek. We had to buy two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of activity buses, there, there was no budget line item for them, they weren't forecasted, but by God, we needed them. So I'm like, okay, great, let's just pull out the, you know, the, uh, reserve account. And I was shocked to find out that we were not doing, uh, uh, setting up reserve accounts and doing accruals for, um, for depreciable assets such as the school, the activity buses. And, uh, I was assured that we're accruing fifty cents a mile and putting that in a reserve account. So where, where are those reserve accounts, uh, for the accruals that we've been doing for the depreciation of school bu, of activity buses?
You can, that's a miscellaneous revenue, I believe, yeah. You want to talk any, anything else to share about that, is that, it's under miscellaneous revenue? Uh, we can break it out for you, sir, and give you that information.
So, so then that's, then that's restricted, right?
It's restricted for that use.
Okay, well, that one point three seven nine million says none. And if our, and if our, uh, if our accruals, uh, for the activity buses are part of that, then I'd like to know how much that is, and that needs to be fenced off.
Well, we can revise that, and we'll get you where we are with that, we'll get the whole board that information.
Okay, and then, um, gosh, a year and a half or so ago, remember when we discovered that money in the, in the federal lunch program? And at first, it was a million, then it was two million, and then I think it was almost approaching three million, um.
It was coming in out of COVID, yes, sir, with the reimbursement, uh, it was a significant fund balance in our child nutrition program.
So we had almost three million dollars in the child nutrition program, and we took a big chunk out of that out, that was transferred. I think it was a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, where did, where is that in here?
Well, we, we begin, we were able, because of the fund balance, we were able to charge indirect costs based on the program. That goes into miscellaneous revenue, correct, I'm wrong, Tina, that goes into miscellaneous revenue. There also were some equipment purchases, et cetera, to bring down that fund balance, because the state does ask you to operate, uh, not have such a huge fund balance. Um, so we've been working on that, but that, I don't, I don't have the, the numbers in front of me. But there, there technically wasn't any kind of transfer out, but we were just able to begin to charge indirect costs.
I think, I thought that we did a special budget resolution to transfer a chunk out. I agree, we bought some refrigerators and stuff, but I think.
I don't think you can do that, I think it has to be used for that program. So I don't think we transferred, but we did try to start spinning it down, and we were able to start charging that indirect cost, which did essentially transfer. But it, it allows you to charge that, and then it goes into miscellaneous revenue, yeah.
Right, so is all that money spent, is it transferred, is it spent or transferred out, is it, what happened to it? I mean, if we didn't, so, I'll just make it, so let's say we managed to, uh, bill a million dollars indirect cost. You know, we went back five years and said, "Oh, look, here's five years of indirect cost." Where'd that million dollars go, or however much, it just went in the general fund and we bought stuff with it?
No, sir, it's accrued in miscellaneous, that's why we, we have some funds that are, you know, at a significant place with miscellaneous revenue, because it's been allowed to accrue over time, so that's why there's one point three in there. Um, to your note, the activity buses underneath that, so we do need to fence that off and make sure we share with the board exactly where that is.
Yeah, look, I, I think my, my takeaway from this, and I don't have my mind completely around it because, you know, God, you'd spend weeks just going through spreadsheets. But my, my cautionary tell is that we are, but we are deficit spending much more than the board realizes. Again, we have a deficit, uh, that we're calling fund balance appropriation. We have a three point two million dollar deficit just this year. And keep in mind that we're spending, uh, Medicaid reimbursement, almost a million dollars on computers. Well, next year, and we need computers, what are we going to rob to pay for that? And then, by the way, we transferred through, you know, uh, oh, we could do overhead absorption. We took a million or so dollars out of our lunch program, and that got spent somewhere. So my cautionary tell to everyone is we are deficit spending much, much more than I think the board members realize because we are consuming little pockets of money, uh, that accumulated, and as we find them, they've been spent. And, uh, there's not a whole lot left of these little pockets of money, because we've identified quite a few of them over the last few years and rooted them out. Anyway, I have no point, other than just, you know, these are just my thoughts after looking at these three slides. Four slides, thank you.
Further questions by members of the board? Uh, one of the things that, um, um, I have observed is that Mr. Pacerno's, um, uh, funding formula gave us, uh, over a million dollars more than we would have otherwise gotten last year. It is not the board's funding formula, but is Mr. Pacerno's funding formula. And, um, the estimate at that time was that we are getting much more money this way than we would have gotten had there not been a funding formula, and certainly according to Mr. Pacerno. The other thing is that we tend to take a look, I think Mr. Hensley had one thing which was, um, which was important, and that is that we tend to look solely at fund, I believe it's fund two. Um, and we say, "Okay, we're deficit spending for fund two," but no, there's fund eight. But, and we have unrestricted funds and fund eight, well, why do we have, are we appropriating the funds in fund eight? Now, the only reason why we have fund eight is because we need to segregate certain monies because they don't go to the charters, okay? And a couple of years ago, the government required us to put fund eight into fund two, am I correct on that? Dr. Lackler, at least.
Uh, no, sir.
Certain, certain amounts of fund eight into fund two.
No, sir, I'm, I don't know exactly what you're talking about.
I, I thought you had said that, um, that they allowed us to separate out fund two, fund eight a couple of years ago.
Well, years ago, when, when the charter school funding was set up, fund eight is a, is a fund that was set in local school districts for this purpose, uh, to deposit your reimbursement funds and impact aid funds, things like that. So that's what I'm, that's what I was referring to, it wasn't, it wasn't the flip-flop. It was when the charter school funding model was set up, this fund eight was set up as a fund for this purpose.
Uh, okay, so if fund eight and fund two, at least the unrestricted funds and fund eight, um, are combined with fund two, then the picture looks much, much different, and looks, uh, much better. Uh, that's, uh, that's my point. Now, uh, one of the things is that if we want more money, we don't tax, okay? Only the county commissioners tax, okay? The county commissioners, um, uh, and by the way, we, it's important that the public knows that we do not get thirty-eight point five percent of all, um, uh, sales and property tax. We get thirty-eight point five percent of, uh, budgeted sales and property tax, which is a different number. The balance of that goes into the county fund, which will probably be used for our, um, for our fiscal needs, especially when we, uh, build, uh, a new Carthage Elementary School. Uh, and when we take into account, um, the money that the county spends, not just on our local operating funds, but also on our fiscal needs, um, it is much greater than that thirty-eight point nine, thirty-eight point five percent. Um, and, and, so, to those who want, and I, I would love to get more money, okay? Um, but those who, who, who believe we need to get more money, need to go to the county commissioners and say the following, which, um, and that is, uh, don't lower the property tax and give us more money so that we can, uh, up the stipends of, uh, of teachers, which would be nice, if we could. Um, and to take that penny of revenue, they're reducing taxes, uh, by two pennies per hundred. Um, and to give that as a stipend for teachers. But I believe that the county commission is being rather generous. Um, it's a tight budget year, um, and that was one of the reasons why in Budget Committee, um, I was talking about the fact that it will cost us an additional hundred thousand dollars to, um, to buy the, um, excuse me, yes, a hundred, additional hundred thousand dollars this year, I believe I'm correct, to buy the, uh, devices for areas two and three, uh, as opposed to leasing it. But leasing it will cost us more money in the future. And it was the, uh, the consensus of the committee, uh, that we'd go ahead and, and, and buy that. So, um, so there are things that we could tighten up on a little bit, but I do believe that we're solvent enough. Uh, and the county commissioner is, have been generous enough this year to give us sufficient money to, um, to take care of our needs. Next year, may be a different year, and we may have different needs. Um, uh, but so will the county, and, uh, they will expand, uh, they, they will, will be expanding their revenues and expanding their needs. Uh, so, uh, we'll have to see what that thirty-eight point five percent gives us next year. Okay, um, uh, and I think it, I think we need to go along with the county commission this time out, because I think the county commission and Mr. Pacerno, um, gave us as much as they could under the circumstances. Um, so, all right, that's my opinion on it. So I do still support, uh, Mr. Pacerno's, uh, funding formula. Uh, and I think Mr. Pacerno, uh, especially when he points out our fund eight and our other funds, um, uh, is quite, quite wise in, in, in his, um, in his evaluation. So I think we need to go along with the county commissioners, at least, uh, so far. And, and their conservative governance, and we can conservatively, um, govern the, uh, the schools so that we can get every dime necessary, uh, out of our, uh, out of the revenues that they give us. So, anything further?
I have additional comments.
Yes, sir.
So the first thing is Chair Levy keeps calling this Mr. Pacerno's funding formula. And Mr. Pacerno may or may not have proposed this funding formula, let's say for the sake of argument that he did. But once it was passed by this board, it was no longer Mr. Pacerno's funding formula. I remember the chair arguably, arguing vehemently for this. So this is our funding formula. Actually, it's not mine. I voted against it. But for the six board members who voted for this, this is your funding formula. You cannot blame this on Mr. Pacerno. If Nick proposed a funding formula, I wasn't at that meeting. But if he proposed a funding formula, that would have been the start of the negotiations. Then we go back and say, yeah, you know, we all agree we need a funding formula, but that's not the right one. Then we should have educated him on the failures of that funding formula and the downside of it. Because everyone wants properly funded public schools. I know everybody does. But the bottom line is six members of this school board agreed to the wrong funding formula. So let's just start calling it the Chair Levy or the Moore County School Board funding formula. Because six members, at least five, I'm not, I think it was a six-one vote, voted for this funding formula. And it failed the first year. It failed the first year. If we could go back two slides, the second point I want to make, the second issue, I'm sorry, one more right there. The second issue I want to make a point of rebutting. And Chair Levy has said this every single time. And then, of course, you know, he's, would take the last word because, you know, I'm chair and I get the last word, which isn't quite true. But anyway, he has said every single time we get this, more money this way. That is factually incorrect. And you can see it under every scenario this year, this coming year, we get less money. Because if we would have had our funding formula tied to what drives our increases, the first year, this coming year, the projected, we would have gotten, if the impact to our local payroll would have been 1.275 million, that's what the county would have given us. If it would have been the 6% certified, 6, 8% certified, 6% classified, we would have got 1.8 million. If you totaled this up, this year, under a funding formula that's based upon the increase in wages and inflation, we would have gotten a $2.2 million increase from the county commissioners. Instead, we got a $500,000 increase. So Mr. Levy, Chair Levy can say, we get more money this way. That's nonsense. And this slide proves it. Right there, under the course of action that circled, we would have gotten an additional 2.2 million. Instead, we got 510K. If you go out to the worst-case scenario, good case scenario from paying our people adequately, we would have got $3 million, $3,020,000. The point is, we would have been made whole. This entire, notwithstanding what Levy just said, this entire deficit is a result of agreeing to, not just agreeing to, but actively advocating for a funding formula that was guaranteed to fail because it wasn't tied to the factors that drive our increase. And the county commissioners would have agreed to our funding formula. No one presented it to them because at that time, the chair took everything over and was doing everything directly. And anyway, so it's absolute nonsense that this form, that the other, the current formula gives us more money. Chair Levy says, well, the first year, they gave us an extra billion dollars. That's correct. And that would have been part of the new baseline. So that million dollars would have become a new baseline. So under every scenario, we would have ended up with far more money. The fact of the matter is, this demonstrably failed the first year. You can see it right there. Levy also said that the county commissioners gave us as much money as possible. No, they gave us exactly the percentage that the agreement was. And if the agreement would have been my proposal, that's what they would have given us. So they didn't give us every penny they could. It was a good, they gave us every penny that they were obligated to. And the fact of the matter is, this board agreed to a bad deal with the county commissioners. And we're paying the price the first year. It wasn't even like five years later, I'm saying, I told you so. I'm telling you, the first year, I told you so. Then that goes on to the next point, is Levy said, this is a tight budget year. You bet this is a tight budget year for Moore County schools. See, at first, I thought he meant it was a tight budget year for the county. No, 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 no. The county has so much tax revenue that they're returning it to the taxpayers in the form of property tax relief. And I support that. It's a tough budget year for Moore County schools because we agreed to a crappy budget formula that, we should have gone back and said, no, here's what we need and here's what would have funded it. And then we'd be made whole. Then the other thing that Chair Levy said is, and it's absolutely amazing because he said, if you think that we need more money, go to the county commissioners and advocate for more money. Well, first of all, he's asking people, at first, he asked people to advocate for money over and above the funding formula that he negotiated. So Levy led this board down the path to a bad funding formula. Then he started asking people to advocate to the county commissioners that they go over and above that that he advocated for. But then he's, I'm unsure where the chair is because then he circled back around and said, oh, you know, but I don't think we should advocate for more money. So I'm not sure what that whole comment was about advocating for more money. So are we, are people supposed to advocate for more money or not advocate for more money? Because you actually played both ends of that.
You want, you want more money. There's the one cent will give us 2.2 million dollars. And you could have, and you can still go to the county commission.
When you say, when you say, no, no, no. When you said 1%, are you saying 1 cent of property valuation or sales tax? Property valuation or sales tax?
Property valuation. Is 2.2 million dollars. You can go to the county commission and ask the county commission to rescind its 1-cent reduction in sales tax and give us more because we can certainly use it. Okay? Or you can go along with Commissioner Pacerno's funding formula.
So what do you support?
Which, which I think is, is the right thing to do. By the way, Commissioner Pacerno looked at your particular, at your particular proposal and found at least with his spreadsheets and with that of Mr. Vest, that we're getting more money this way.
So Chair Levy, that's the second time you've said that. And Nick's not here to talk about this, but you are. So if Nick says that my plan got us less money, then how come, we'll call it, the current plan is getting us $500,000 increase? And if it was actually tied to what was driving our price increases, we would get 2 point, I mean, you're asking everyone in this room to ignore what they see with their own eyes. If the budget, if the, if the formula with the county would have been tied to what drives our increase in revenues, you can see right there, we would have got 2.2 million dollars more this year. We're getting $500,000 more, which is 1.7 million dollars less than we would have gotten with a proper plan. Yet you keep saying that this gets us more money. It does not, and you can see it right there. And it even gets worse the further out you go. So how do you keep saying that this, your plan gets us more money? When you can see right there, it gets us 1.7 million dollars less this year, the first year it's implemented. How do you say that?
First of all, Mr. Pacerno's plan, I believe was as much as we could get from the county commissioner.
That's not, that's not true. That's not true.
Excuse me.
Yes, go ahead. You're correct. As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact.
No.
Okay.
I just want to make one comment if I may. Whenever I met with Mr. Pacerno to try to wrap my head around our budget, their proposed budget, and get a better understanding, I made the comment to him that numbers don't lie because I thought numbers don't lie. And he very quickly said to me, oh, but they do. Because you can make an argument either way, which is exactly what you all are doing. And it's fine. But I do believe that it's time to wrap it up because we're not accomplishing anything here. If we want to go talk to the county commissioners and try to work out something different, then we need to do that. If we don't, we, right now, we have what we have. That's all we're going to get. We're going to do our very best. That's what we're doing right now, Dr. Locklear. And your name is totally escaping me right now. Ms. Edmonds has done a great job with working with what we have. So we have what we have. We're going to make the best of it. And that's my comments.
Your point of order is well taken.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And my, my point is, you know what? You're absolutely correct. We created this mess and we have this mess. But we need to be honest about what we're facing. And that's the clarion call that I'm sending out. We are budget, we are deficit spending far more than the members of this board realize. And I've cited, I've cited other examples that don't show up on here where we've reallocated money this year to cover for the technology. You know, we're taking almost a million dollars out of Medicaid reimbursement to buy laptops. Where's that million dollars coming from next year? I don't, I don't see a whole lot of fund balance left. So my point is, and then I further made the point that we got ourselves in this pickle because of the horrible deal that was approved with the county commissioners, that we should have gone back with a counterproposal on and explained why. But the point is, is we are deficit spending far more than people realize. And next year is going to be a mess.
Let me, let me just.
Next budget year.
Let me just say that I do have faith in Commissioner Pacerno's numbers. And, but, but for those who want us, want taxes to be raised and would need that, that one cent sales tax rescinded, you might want to argue that to the county commission. But I think we can handle what we're, what we're given. And I think we'll do it well. Any, okay, let's move on.
Yes, I have something since you asked. You know, you make it sound like the option is increase or rescinding a property tax cut or properly funding our schools. Part of our goal, and you know, first of all, we promised people a zero-based budget. And, you know, we didn't do that. Then we promised, okay, we're going to do a revenue neutral, a continuation budget. But we're unable to do a continuation budget because we're deficit spending. Our continuation budget is actually sucking 4 to 5 million dollars. We're spending 4 to 6 million dollars. We're spending, we're deficit spending far more than the 3 point, or the 3.2 million up there. So it's not, the choice is properly, what we should have done is made sure that we had a funding formula that first and foremost made us whole each and every year. And as long as we were made whole each and every year, then the, then the tax burden will fall where it does. So, so the chair is putting forth a straw man, a false argument of, oh, gosh, you want to rescind that? No, I want to make sure that our, our schools are properly funded and fully funded each year. And the first year, we're not. You see right there, we're underfunded 3.2 million dollars minus other adjustments that we made. Anyway, I will, I'm done.
So ask the county commissioners to raise taxes. And maybe that's what you want to do. At any rate, next board committee reports. Yes.
Mr. Chair, can we take, can we take a break, a recess?
This is, we're right at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
All right, board committee updates. Okay, any, we.
I actually have something.
Yes, go ahead.
And Ms. Purvis, thank you for being here. I don't know if you're here for me or not, but, thank you anyhow. I did want to, we did have a construction meeting and that date is losing my mind, but it was last week. And in fact, if you, Jenny, if you want to just kind of briefly go over, because I think it'd just be great for the public to know, because not many public people were there, to just talk about, and it was half and half about what the overwhelming response was with that. I don't know if you want to just kind of give a quick.
So at our committee meeting, we just reviewed the findings and our discussions from Carthage Elementary.
Okay, just, just one moment. I actually thought we were at the end of the, at the very end of the meeting. But I think.
We're doing a, we're just doing a committee report.
No, no, I understand, but I didn't want to keep Mr. Hensley from, you know, need to take a break.
It's going to be two seconds. I just wanted to have the public know what the report was. And then it's not going to be very long.
Why don't we just take a break? Assuming Mr. Hensley is using the facilities, why don't we just hold off for a second?
Okay.
Okay. I thought it was just going to be like 30 seconds. I want to give.
Pretty much going to be that.
Yeah. I want to give Mr. Hensley a chance to be here.
We're taking a five-minute break.
Yeah, let's, let's make that a five-minute break. All right, let's call us, go ahead, call us back into session. Ms. Purvis.
Yes, sir. So Ms. Caldwell had asked, and I just reviewed what was shared in construction committee meeting. We reviewed what was discussed at Carthage Elementary when we had our meeting there with the community. There were two questions that we were trying to get to the bottom of in that community meeting. The first being, would the preference be to renovate the current school or to rebuild and have a new school? Overwhelmingly, the response was that a new school was the desire of the community. The second question was, if a new school is the desire of the community, would you prefer that that be located at the current site or on a new site? The split was about half and half. There was one more for a new site than there was for the current site. The concerns were noted, safety and, as well as the amount of land that's there for future expansion.
Thank, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then we did also talk about our next steps, which was to find a consultant. And I'm not sure if you've done that or not yet, but.
Yes, ma'am.
Find a consultant and then talk about what are, what we could do, whether, what, if land is available or how we would rebuild it on the land that we have. Correct?
So the consultant would be looking for possible sites that would allow us to serve the population that's there now in the District of Carthage Elementary, as well as be located so that we could pull 150 to 250 students from Sand Hills Farm Life to. Farm Life to allow for that future growth that we're expecting there. So he'd be doing locations, basically. And that was it.
All right. Any questions or yes, comments on Mr. Hensley?
Yeah. So a couple of things. The meeting, how was it announced?
It was noticed, it's on our calendar, et cetera.
Noticed on our overall school board calendar, board education calendar?
Yes, sir.
Also posted online and then on the window.
Yeah, okay.
And social media.
Okay, what about?
And Ms., Ms. Warren also shared it with her parent population, et cetera.
Yeah, were the county, were the, were the Carthage commissioners there?
Yes.
Okay.
We reached, I believe you reached out to.
Reached out to them. They were not at.
The mayor was and the town manager.
The mayor was, yes, yes. You said, I thought you meant county commissioners.
We did invite, we did invite the commissioners as well.
Yes, mayor was there, planning director.
And the county commissioners were invited too.
They were invited, yes, sir.
Did any of them attend?
No, no, sir.
Yeah, okay. Very, very, look, I've talked again until I blew in the face about the planning process and getting intention from the stakeholders is very important. And again, I caution you all, at some point, you're going to go to the county, we're going to go to the county commissioners and say, we need 500, whatever the number is. And they're going to say, what's the plan? And if, if we haven't asked what they would like to see very early on the process, you know, a lot of time's going to be wasted because they're going to say, maybe this isn't at all what we want, and we want to see changes. And by that time, we spent time, effort, and money. So who's the consultant?
Mike Miller from Numerex is just locating, simple location.
Okay, so he's doing locations?
Just locations.
Yeah. And I, I get the choice matrix renovator new, right? Everybody wants shiny new, right? When it comes to schools. For some reason, Pinehurst, man, you can't tear down a single building unless it's a school, and then you can't bulldoze it fast enough. I don't understand that. But, and then Kern or new location, you know, a very, you know, I would think if I was in charge of, if I lived in Carthage, I want a vibrant downtown area. I want a community school that my kids can walk to. And then also maybe something on the fringe. You know, if this board truly believes in smaller, community-oriented schools, and you know, you spend a little bit more per child, but I think you get a lot better thing. I, I think it makes a lot of sense to build something out on a growth corridor somewhere and then circle back around and renovate the current Carthage Elementary School to service the people downtown so that families can walk to school. And we don't have all these busing problems and this and that. So I'm a big fan of renovating it, even if we build a new school, build a, build a, go out somewhere, build a 600-capacity school, but maybe a 800-capacity school, only build it out to 300, move the existing students, renovate this one, and then have two schools. That is a much better course of action because it allows the, the town of Carthage to have a community school that they can walk to their children to, and they can grow out and have high-density housing as well as have a higher growth out in the hinterlands. So was that course of action discussed?
That was not discussed at this time.
Yeah. So it was kind of excluded. Did anyone bring it up?
No.
And it also goes back to something I talked about earlier today is, and I've said this before, this central office with all this, this place, the best, I mean, a tornado would be an upgrade, right? So we could also look at using the old Carthage Elementary as a true central office headquarters. Anyway. I might add that the, having gone to the county commissioners' work session, and I would invite all members of the board to please attend the county commissioners' work sessions, because we really do learn a lot. County commissioners are asking us for a proposal. In other words, at the, at the, actually, at the last work session, they said, how much money do we have in the bank? And I think the discussion was how much money we have in the bank for, for capital, capital buildings. And then they gave a number, and then they said, well, aren't we going to use that for a new school? I said, well, we're waiting for the, for the school board to give us a proposal. So, so we do consult with the county commission, and the county commissioners told us they want to see a proposal, which is one of the reasons why we had all the stakeholders together brainstorming. And we have, we had one guest at our last construction committee meeting from Carthage, and will continue to seek out suggestions. And if you have a suggestion, like maybe the one Mr. Hensley made, then certainly talk to the, to the construction committee about it because those are the things that we need to discuss also in committee.
Yeah, except Sheriff Levy, if you recall, I made that exact same proposal twice in open session during my committee report when I was in charge of the construction committee. I made that exact same proposal about Carthage Elementary, but now you're circling around and saying, maybe I should suggest it to the construction committee. That's the circular logic you use all the time. I mean, you invite me to attend committee meetings as a member of the public, and if the chair allows members of the public to speak. So on one hand, you say, oh, gosh, provide that input. And then you say, as a member of the public, and I, the, the public didn't elect me to sit in this board seat to like, attend committee meetings as a general member of the public, hoping that the chair, this is what you, I'm just repeating what you said last meeting, last work session, that I could show up at committee meetings, and if the chair allowed the general public to speak, then I could speak. And you know, you're completely disingenuous in what you say. Oh, you know, Mr. Hensley, you could propose that to the committee. A, you've set up impossible rules where it's impossible for me to participate in any meaningful way. And in this case, I've already presented this to the committee because it was like the plan when I was in charge of the committee. So it's that cir, disingenuous circular logic you use all the time. I could make like hours, I could make days of videos of you doing that.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. In any case, which I just will say I differ with. Okay, thank you. Any further committee reports? We've already talked about the policy committee and certainly the budget committee. We've had extensive discussions on that. The safety committee is not here right now. That's Mr. Holmes.
When was the last time we've got a committee report from the safety committee? I don't think we've ever had a committee report from the safety committee, actually.
Yeah, it's entirely possible. And you probably should bring that up too, Mr. Holmes.
The committee chair hasn't even been here the last two times that we've done committee reports. And same thing with Mr. Benway. Two of the committee chairs haven't even been here the last two works. I was told I need to attend work sessions because this is where the sausage is made. I show up and two of the committee, I mean, supposedly, you've told everyone, oh, security's paramount, security is of utmost importance. But under your leadership, we've not had one security committee report, not one, like for a year and a half. And you don't even have committee chairs. You don't even require them to attend meetings and give committee reports. So I'm confused. I mean, is this where the sausage is made? Or is this where committee chairs just choose not to attend and, and do their duties?
By the way, Mr. Benway went home sick.
Well, he wasn't here last week either, or last work session.
Well, I think there were three work sessions that you missed as well.
I wasn't the committee chair not giving.
But I'm not going to criticize you, and I'm not going to criticize Mr. Benway.
I'm not criticizing, I'm criticizing your leadership and the, the fact that committee chairs aren't here. I mean, they don't give committee reports. They, they don't do anything.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. Okay, anything further from committee reports? Okay. In any case, board comments, Mr. Hensley.
Mr. Levy, I'm sorry, Sheriff Levy, if I could just offer one, we had a question in regards to the cell tower lease from Mr. Hensley. I think Ms. Purvis has some clarification on that question.
Cindy, could you go right up quick?
And if you would allow, Mr. Chair, I'd like, if she, we could just offer that information.
Oh, please, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I didn't want to speak with more specificity until I went back and revisited so I know exactly that I'm right before I speak. But I went back and conferred with council and Crown Castle as well as finance. When we look at that third bullet that Mr. Hensley was pointing out, replace existing $250 a month revenue share provision in Second Amendment with 30% revenue share on future sub-tenants. I wanted to let you know we currently have no sub-tenants. The only tenants we currently have are AT&amp;T and Sprint. So we have not been collecting any revenue for sub-tenants. The Second Amendment of this agreement specified that it would have to be the third co-location before we could start drawing money for sub-tenants. With this new lease agreement, we've done away with that. So it will be any sub-tenant moving forward. So it will not be a third co-location. It will be any sub-tenant. So that term future is okay to stay because we have no current sub-tenants. And so when I spoke with Crown Council and Council, when we look at the actual contract that is attached, number five in the contract says they're totally doing away with that Second Amendment provision of the 250 per month. So as we move forward, Mr. Hensley is correct, 30% will be gathered from all sub-tenants, but currently, we have no sub-tenants, if that makes sense. So they were saying, we're taking out the 250. As we move forward, future sub-tenants that we would gather, we will gather, we will earn 30%. We'll have a 30% provision. Currently, we have no sub-tenants, and there'll be no third co-location. It is just sub-tenant period.
Understand. So AT, just to be clear, AT&amp;T and Sprint are included in the base, in the currently, in the base lease.
Yes.
And if any, any additional ones that they bolt on, we'll get 30% of it.
That's right. Any additions that they add on. Yes, yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify that in the work session. So I will add those notes on to the executive summary. I do think that I, we probably need to leave the four bullet points as they are because that is the wording from the lease terms. But then I will add additional comment that I'll share with you right now to this executive summary for the work, I mean, for the board, regular board meeting, if that sounds good. Any other questions?
Any further questions by members of the board? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Board, board, board comments. Mr. Hensley?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Caldwell. Let me just say that a couple of things I was very impressed with. I've gone to a couple of concerts for our, for our band and for our orchestra, and I am extremely impressed. And I'm just very much want to point out to the public that we are more than just reading, writing, or arithmetic. Went to a couple of scholarship banquets, and we need to be very, very proud of our students who are making millions and millions of dollars of scholarship funds, and to our donors who donate to the scholarship funds. These are just wonderful things. And of course, to our graduates, we wish them all the best, and we'll be all looking forward to attending our graduation ceremonies as we, as we do each and every year. And thank, thank the administration for its accomplishments for another great academic year. Dr. Locklear, do you have anything else?
No, sir. Just appreciate the board's time and staff's work for today's meeting. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Same.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor, aye. Aye. No opposed.